In the figures, Hamilton continues to pose a very solid non-residential building permit gains and we have a growing number of FDI success stories. We've shown a few on the screen which illustrate the spectrum that Sheila was talking about, how you can move from exports to joint ventures to expansions, building new facilities. We have AZZ which is a relocation from St. Catherine's, if I recall, to an existing facility in Hamilton. We have Darling International and Ebro which were both acquisitions. We have the expansion at Toshiba and then of course we have probably the highest profile or one of the higher profile success stories in Maple Leaf and Canada Bread, which was a combination of a consolidation and a relocation, then eventually purchased by Grupo Bimbo. It's also a very good lesson, the last one in particular, on what's possible in Hamilton when the city mobilizes to foster and secure these kinds of investments. The other message that we heard loud and clear through the consultations and also through our assessment was to do with the life science opportunity. We heard a bit about the Fraunhofer Institute this morning and there was a joke earlier about the Super Bowl and I was reminded by that of that commercial. I'm not sure if you saw it with the young boy with the prosthetic legs. That is almost what we're talking about here because when we talk about life sciences, you look across North America, there's no question that pharmaceuticals, Big Pharma, life sciences is a huge growth opportunity. It's being targeted by the province through their jobs and prosperity fund. There's a separate venture capital seed fund for life sciences that Master helped to develop. It's a sector that's being targeted by all of your competitors, along with advanced manufacturing, ICT. It is absolutely an opportunity. So this, what's happening here is an incredible opportunity for Hamilton because if you think back to that Super Bowl commercial, we're not talking about 100 jobs and $4 million in provincial funding. That's not the expectation, that's not what the potential is viewed as. What's expected here and what's possible is the creation of an entirely new manufacturing space. It's the nucleus for something else. It's 3D printing, it's advanced manufacturing, it's cell diagnostics, it's point of care. It's a whole new space and when you look at what's happened in Southern York region with the tech cluster in Markham, Richmond Hill and increasingly Vaughan. Interestingly, you look at Pill Hill in Mississauga, you look at Kitchener Waterloo, the question is, how do we make it happen in Hamilton? Or given that it's already underway, how do we make it happen faster? So we've recommended a strategy which is structured around three themes, value proposition, lead generation and investment readiness. Recasting the value proposition is about addressing issues like, how do we raise the visibility of Hamilton on the global stage as part of this integrated Southern Ontario economy? How do we differentiate the community within the metropolitan area as a preferred location? Then how do we facilitate the location decision? How do we show them the love, as one of the stakeholders pointed out? Maximizing lead generation is all about return on investment. It's about targeting the right sectors and the right geographies. It's focusing first on exports, recognizing that it's of great value to move firms through that chain until you wind up at the highest end, which is your Maple Leaf, all the while using your resources efficiently and effectively, both internal and external. Ensuring investment readiness is ensuring readiness. It's land supply, it's taking a proactive and integrated approach to tracking investments and providing strong after-sales support. Not only to smooth the transition to Hamilton, but also to identify other opportunities that might be available. And so I should, I should pause there briefly and say that although we've structured the strategy as being made up of a series of steps, really it should be viewed as a cycle. It starts with understanding the opportunity, determining competitiveness, targeting the prospects, increasing your FDI visibility and tracking, securing the investments, and then following up for after-sales service, which winds you back up to understanding other opportunities. And the cycle gets going and it continues. And it's important to understand it this way because that cycle is what all of your big GTA competitors are doing. They've been doing it for a long time and some of them devote significant resources to it. So in order for Hamilton to get into the game, as, as one of our interviewees suggested, it's very important to have, and as Sheila mentioned, a structured action plan. And we have recommended one that is arranged around five elements, a marketing program, community partnerships, immigrant entrepreneurs, outreach priorities and tracking success. The marketing program is both internal and external. It's ensuring internal alignment on the benefits of foreign direct investment, the timeframes that are involved, the resources that are required, the impact of having senior leadership involved. It's about a comprehensive marketing strategy for the key sectors and subsectors. It's about advancing the transforming Hamilton theme and it's about putting in place geographic strategies, Plan India, Plan China, Plan Germany. It's also about tracking your success stories to communicate both internally and externally that the efforts are paying off and that traction is being gained in the community. Community partnerships are about focusing on the existing base. It's about export oriented events, it's about identifying the firms that are export ready, firms that want to export, then helping them develop an export readiness plan. It's about maintaining relationships with government and non-government and academic and non-academic institutions. All we have to do to get a sense of how successful that can be is again, look at Fraunhofer and then there is no question that there's a need for a life science champion. That came through clearly in the Chamber of Commerce report. It's been confirmed by our assessment and we've heard it from a number of the people that we spoke to in the community. The immigrant entrepreneurs is all about understanding the networks. It's about understanding the diaspora networks in Hamilton and the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area. It's also about looking for opportunities to fill some of the holes that have been left behind by the termination of some of the federal immigrant investment attraction programs. Now, some of them were, or I should say, investment assistance programs. Some of those are very old, they date from the seventies, they probably should have been put away. But it presents an incredible opportunity for Hamilton and particularly the Global Hamilton Council, who will be advancing the immigrant attraction action plan, along with targeting international students and understanding the networks. The outreach priorities are the Maple Leafs of the world. It is the long-term, external, elephant hunting FDI opportunity. Absolutely need to formalize the Invest Hamilton partnership, but more as a forum for information sharing, not necessarily to ask the membership to carry out specific tasks, but more to get information into the city of Hamilton so that we can follow the action plan and the strategy. Absolutely maintaining and solidifying provincial and federal relationships to stay high on the radar and make sure that we're leveraging their networks. And Pan Am Games has been addressed through a separate strategy. Tracking success is tracking success, it's accountability, it's performance management, it's making sure you get your return on investment from the trade shows and the missions and the conferences. And it's also tracking back into the marketing program, the success stories in the track record. And, you know, in Hamilton, there are only going to be more of these. We're really in a period of incredible uplift here in the city, at least looking back to the 1980s. I mean, you had a period between 1980 and early 2000s where there was no employment growth. I mean, it went down and barely started to come up. You look at the, the Bayfront, you look at the area coming around the airport, you look at what's going on with West Harbour. I think we really are at incredible period, we're at the beginning of an incredible period of foreign direct investment. And let's not forget that it was the big US multinationals that led the initial growth of the steel industry in Hamilton. So we're very happy about this strategy. We hope that council will consider recommending the action plan and we're happy to take any questions on the approach that we've recommended. Thanks very much.
So it's not so much questions and now, you know, I'm hugely supportive of economic development and making sure that we're reaching farther and further in the kind of the global market. I think that's, that's critically important, that's where we need to be. But I, I maybe, and I, and I appreciate the presentation, I think you're hitting all the right notes in terms of what, what that means in terms of an action plan. I think I, I, in my mind, I, I thought we were already there. So I'm, I'm a little surprised by kind of a, the, the, I guess, action plan 2.0 in terms of kind of next generation. So in your mind, you've developed an action plan, is that, are we off the mark somewhere that we're not tracking in the right direction? I mean, I think in many respects we are. So where are the gaps in terms of what we're currently doing? The clusters we've identified, which is pretty much what you've identified in terms of the areas where we could see growth, especially on the export side. Global Hamilton is operating and starting to operate in terms of the immigration side and connecting to other countries and, and the export market and how can we grow those opportunities? So where is the gap that, that you're, you're trying to identify in terms of what we're not potentially doing as well as we could?
So we would say that the world is changing at a very rapid rate. Technology, digitization, the movement of, the flow of goods and services around the world is accelerating at a very fast pace. And so therefore, becoming global is, is like business rule 101, anything that we do. And so whether it's, you know, in a professional services firm or services or whatever, that's, that's a fait accompli, you must do that. So I think that's an opportunity, that's a gap, you know? And so attending events like Cornet and MIPM, you know, the real estate forums and all of the other big events, you may have to attend those for five or 10 years before something actually materially comes out of that. But that's a really important step that we've identified as a potential gap. Some of the other municipalities that we talked to through our interview process would have formal programs on India or China or absolute specifics around that. So that's yet another step that, that you could take. And then alignment, which I'll turn over to you to talk about the alignment opportunity.
Uh-huh, yes. The, one of the themes that came through clearly in our consultations was the municipalities that appeared to be most successful in terms of attracting, attracting foreign direct investment were the ones that were aligned most fully internally in, in pursuit of those opportunities. I mean, the mayor would go abroad, it would be accompanied by a senior management team, it would be the full court press, so to speak, in terms of tracking down there's investment there. Would be sort of a very careful consideration of new proposals. They might be contentious, they might not be popular with everyone, but at least there would be, you know, some sort of a pause in an evaluation process before the decision was made to say yes or no. So there was a strong theme of alignment that arose from the municipalities that have been most successful in attracting investment over the last five or 10 years.
Well, it's, I mean, it seems to me that, that the critical piece in all of this is, is understanding your own market and where, where the connections are. And maybe through you to our staff, I mean, are we, are we kind of doing the analytics in terms of our existing opportunities, the companies that are, I mean, I, I, you know, it's, I, I think it'd be foolish for us to chase tech. But we know that tech is over in Waterloo, that, that side of the tech. Biomedical, yes. So I mean, I, you know, are we going to target specifically and are we doing some analytics that actually identifies where those opportunities are and be very targeted? Because I, we can all go fishing in India, but if we just show up and say, we'd like to do business with India, that's, that's just a shot in the dark. That's, that's chasing elephants essentially. So are we doing currently the targeting in terms of connecting those opportunities and finding out where, who and where might be an opportunity to bring here or connect to? Neil, through you and Mr. Chairman.
Through Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, we've been doing that. The point I think I need to make is we're just winding up on our economic development strategy that we developed in 2010. It'll be winding up this year, we're actually starting our second economic development strategy. This will be the second version and it's very much aligned. FDI is going to be a major part of that in terms of the business attraction component. And this is not going to be the four inch document that we had previously where we had to provide justification why we are looking specific clusters and specific industries. That has proven itself already to be the right path for us. What this will be, will be a 30 to 40 page action plan type of document. It will not have all the background detail, we will refer that to the previous strategy for anybody that has issues. But yes, we are very much targeting specific areas. One of the things that neither Anthony or Sheila mentioned is we also go with the, we go overseas with the province for a lot of expositions. So we go as a group, just not as a single municipality. And when we are there, we have meetings set up for us, we're just not going, you know, to, to take a stab at it. We have meetings prepared for our staff throughout the whole exposition. But, you know, through you, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to the mayor's question, yes, we are. But, you know, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to the mayor's question, yes, we are very much targeting these, and they're going to be some very strict performance measurements in this new strategy that's coming down.
I guess what I'm seeing here is in a fine-tuning of the strategy in terms of where we're going to take it to the next level, in terms of being more specifically targeted on a per-country basis, so where the big markets are?
Yeah, though we have the target sectors, and you'll see that clean tech is one, which is more an advanced manufacturing play than a Kitchener-Waterloo Blackberry play, thankfully. And also, a part of this strategy was to validate what the city is doing now.
Right.
Validate the efforts that are being undertaken, because, you know, sometimes I think there might be a perception that when there is attendance at trade shows, it's this unstructured endeavor where you sit at a trade booth and drink coffee all day, which is not what's going on, I don't think, anywhere, and especially not in Hamilton. So it's bringing attention to those activities, it's validating them, and it's pushing the envelope a bit more, because we haven't run the specific numbers, but on an anecdotal basis, you know, based on the performance that you've had recently, your per-capita economic development resources are lower than, say, a place like Mississauga or Brampton or Vaughan. Now, these are not directly comparable communities, but, you know, in our view, it's important to understand, and this is part of the purpose of the strategy, you know, the value of those pursuits and the return on investment. And Neil is absolutely right. That's why we have tracking success as the final step in the action plan, because you want to be able to demonstrate to this council that it's working and it's worthwhile.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, I'm hugely supportive. I mean, clearly, economic development is our largest overriding issue. I think we've kind of said that time and time again, and put more resources into economic development for that reason. It's been successful, and I think it's the revenue picture that comes out of that and the job creation is kind of the critical piece as we move forward. And on this side of the equation, it's absolutely a long-term play, no matter how you cut it. You can't expect results in two years, or three years, or five years necessarily. You measure them in 10-year windows in many respects. But I guess I'm looking more at staff to say, okay, what's the next step after this? Because, I mean, I think there are opportunities worldwide. We want to be very specific about where they are. So the next step for staff, and you mentioned in your report, at the tail end of the report, that there was an expectation that there may be additional resources required, but currently, right now, we have the resources in place that we could make this work. So can I understand that a little better? Because it was kind of a, you said both things at the same time. We need more, but we can do it with what we have.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, for where we are now in the point of preparing the second version of the strategy and delivery, we have sufficient resources. But we're going to need, in the next two to three years, we're probably going to need more in terms of getting more shovel-ready land available, city-owned land, that is. So we're going to need that, but, you know, not in the immediate future.
Yeah, I guess I was more leaning towards, do we have the manpower to execute a broader, you know, exercise in terms of economic development? I mean, that's always been the issue. That's why we invested in economic development in the first place. So I'm assuming we have, I mean, it's all fine and well to have a strategy, but if you don't have the people in place to enact it, then you're kind of spinning your wheels. You're saying we have the people, we have the resources, we have the analytics, we can start tomorrow.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, we do have the people. For the last five years, we have cluster specialists, for example, like Carolyn Reed in our life sciences area. We have staff that are, you know, very well tuned into those sectors, and they're leading each one of those ones for us.
Great. So thank you very much. It's a great report, no question. It's a very important issue for the city of Hamilton, and any city, quite frankly, but I think more so for Hamilton because of where we've been and where we need to go to kind of turn our job and revenue picture around. It's going to be a critical piece for our future economic prosperity, and not to suggest that we haven't done pretty well up until now. I think, based on where we've come from, we can pat ourselves on the back for a nanosecond to say, good for now, but onward and upwards in terms of what the next level of investment needs to be. So I think that's what you're highlighting here today, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Anthony and Sheila. Sheila, you presented the 2013 Advanced Manufacturing Report that we had, and many of the, much of the information that's included in this report was covered in some respects in that report as well. And you talked in both reports about our strengths. Many of the strengths we have today are the same strengths we had 100 years ago that attracted the investment that Anthony referenced at the tail end of his presentation there in terms of our location, our transportation network, our industrial land supply, the higher learning institutions, which would be a new element in the last 30 or 40 years, our diversity, certainly the West Harbour successes, and now the life sciences sector. When I read through the report, and I look at our weaknesses, so you've clearly identified our strengths, and you have identified, when I read between the lines, and in fact, it's quite clear on page 61 of 118, when you look at our weaknesses, you're identifying the lower Bayfront area, which has traditionally been our strength, as today's weakness, or an area where there's room for improvement, maybe is a better term, but you do have it under the challenges category. And you talk, as you did in the 2013 report, of the Hamilton's perceived as a traditional manufacturing steel town, Bayfront's old and dirty and indicative of the city's economic base as a whole, air quality in Hamilton is poor. And so you list those things, which were listed in 213. And I asked questions at that point in time, through you, Mr. Chairman, Sheila. Sheila, I talked about our image. What do we do to assist the city in trying to change the image of that view that people have over the Skyway? And when I read through the report, and I look at the successes like Maple Leaf Foods and Canada Bread and others, some of the bigger new investments that we've all celebrated and welcomed with open arms, those aren't happening in the lower city. And I think your report illustrates why they're not happening there. The image issue is certainly one of them. And when I've talked to Neil's group about brownfield development, about investment in the lower city, those companies, when they visit the city, they're not looking for that type of land. And so we're, the question that I would have, because you've referenced Pittsburgh, you've referenced others who've been where we are today, and they've moved on, and they're doing good things. How are we dealing with that situation, and how can we place a greater emphasis on that area as an opportunity rather than a weakness? And again, three of the top 10 employers that you have in our employers list, we have National Steelcar, Arcelor, and US Steel. Those numbers are on the decline at some point in time, unfortunately. I think one or two of them may be off that top 10 list. So much of your presentation is focused on greenfield industrial development outside of the lower city, and this city needs to make a decision at some point in time in the near future as to what happens next with our lower Bayfront industrial area, and what's the city doing to prepare it for the next chapter in its history? And we're going through a secondary planning process, and now's the time to create a new vision, to create some standards that would certainly help us attract Canada Bread or a Canada Bread-like investment to that area of the city. But it's not happening today because of the, I don't know, call it the baggage that it carries, but with some of the stigma that it has associated with it from its past uses. So can you help us with that in terms of, it seems that our partners, and you've referenced a number of them in Southern Ontario and elsewhere, there are competitors, actually, our partner municipalities, they're getting investments from the federal and provincial government to help them with some of these strategic investments. We're not seeing that here, and I'm wondering how, I mean, I know there's a lot of preamble there, but I'm fixated on that issue. It was an issue in 213, and not much has changed since then.
No, that's fine. And the Bayfront, the West Harbour, you know, East Hamilton, that's all, that's been a part of the city's history for a long, long time, and I've been involved with that for a very long time. I actually led the evidence on behalf of the city in the airport hearing, phase two of the hearing that settled land need, and I can tell you that we covered this in detail. It is a very difficult problem from a development economics problem. It's very difficult. But you might recall that little hysteria problem that Maple Leaf had, and so, like, for them, they just need a pristine greenfield site. Like, that is indicative of the thinking of the big food processors. You're probably not going to get a lot of people that want to go and locate on a tannery site. So, I mean, there are huge, huge challenges down there, which doesn't mean they can't be addressed or overcome, and Sheila's going to talk a little bit about that. So I'm familiar with all of the issues, and I could talk about them for a long time, but we won't do this here. Just as a point of quick clarification, notwithstanding the image or, you know, the smoke stacks, from an FDI perspective, it just needs to be recognized that, you know, from a global, in terms of raising Hamilton's profile on the global platform as part of an integrated Southern Ontario economy, that perception problem is a barrier. And it needs to be overcome somehow, and we've recommended in the report that options to do that be investigated. So you're absolutely correct. There are some very difficult challenges down there, but there are some processes in place to move forward on how we might move the perception on that.
I'll take the real estate perspective. You know, if I'm a real estate investor and I have bajillions of dollars of pension fund money, and I drive over the Skyway Bridge and I see kind of the steel part of Hamilton, well, on one hand, I really respect where it's been and where it's come from, and I respect what it's added to the community. If I'm an investor, I'm saying, how do I take advantage of that? What can I do to make that better? Some of the older, traditional buildings, how can they be repositioned? How can we enhance the value, enhance the opportunity, enhance the cash flow? And that's really who you're trying to connect with, is the development, investment community, and the companies that would locate down there. And so I think there's a Bayfront strategy that's launching very shortly, and so that will really be part of the program for that strategy in terms of the first image, because you can imagine the traffic that's going down the Qway Niagara, that first image, what do you do to polish that image? And then when you start looking at some of the companies that could locate in that area, again, we're doing a complete inventory of all the boxes and what kind of boxes are there, and who can fit in them. But you think about the tech sector and some of the, you know, the rejuvenated businesses that could end up there, that's happened in other countries across, or sorry, other cities across North America. That would be really cool in terms of the brick and beam. You look at allied properties created a REIT of all of those types of buildings in downtown Toronto. They've taken all of the old brick and beam style of buildings, and they've created something else out of it. So in terms of the where you could get to, obviously, it's a long-term journey, because that's not going to go away overnight. But you could paint a picture for the future that's very positive.
My concern is that, you know, as time passes, we see new investments in that area of the city, and they're not, they're very, they're the antithesis of what I would say the Canada Bread is and the Maple Leaf meets. So we have scrap yards, we have a pick-and-pull operation now that's just massive, we have outdoor storage of raw materials, which, again, I'm not trying to belittle the investments that have been made in that area, but the new investments beyond our historic Arcelor and US Steel, the new ones coming in are bulk storage tanks. They're paying taxes, and that's a good thing, but the jobs per hectare or acre, even if you want to boil it down to that, are pale in comparison to the Maple Leaf Foods, the Canada Breads. And so we're getting less employment, and then we're getting all the baggage that comes with many of these operations, the environmental downfall and other associated issues. So does it mean, through this new Bayfront strategy, improving the standards and possibly limiting or excluding some of those uses over the short and medium term to get us to a point where a Maple Leaf Foods who's looking for a pristine area to invest actually looks at that area as a viable alternative? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
So my opinion, for whatever it's worth.
Please.
I think you have to connect the Bayfront to the West Harbour, and you actually have a continuum of uses that's taking place across the entire waterfront. So on one end, it might be heavy industrial right now, and the other end might be clean and wonderful and more of a residential recreation play to it. Gradually, as that West Harbour grows and blossoms under that new framework, it will push into the other areas as well over time. Again, this is a very long-term strategy. It won't happen the next five years quickly in terms of the Bayfront itself. Real estate 101 is highest and best used dictates any day of the week. And so if you're looking at a piece of land, and instead of, you know, open storage, it could become whatever, somebody will build the whatever as soon as you start driving value through the opportunity. So it's a whole strategy on the whole place over a very long term, you know, without a quick fix, I would say. But it needs to be a strategy behind it, very purposeful on how to play, where to win.
I mean, implementing standards, because right now there are no standards with K Industry, and anything goes. And when anything goes, you limit your opportunity in terms of who's going to invest there. And my fear is that we continue beyond five years with the Port Authority purchasing land, just looking for someone to pay a lease. There is no plan in place that says our vision long-term is X, and basically, it's just a, we live with what comes and who visits the city and decides that, yep, I'd like a scrapyard on this parcel of land, and we're going to continue to degrade the land and the associated environment around it. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you're right. It's a challenging situation for you. It would be a lot easier if the port wasn't doing as well as it's doing. But I think on the long-term reuse question, and this is maybe a bit of a different way of looking at it, what it tells me is that you really need the greenfield development. You need Red Hill, you need the AEGD, you need to build the energy, because when you look at communities, when, if you point, pick a community that you would look at and say, here's what I want to happen on the Bayfront, look at the path, and, you know, hopefully somewhere in the GTA, there are not a lot. And if you look at the path of development, like, you look at what's happening in the city of Toronto, all of the office development that's happening in the city of Toronto, the digital cluster, the ICT, all the brick and beam allied, you know, Toronto started off as an industrial place. That was the first wave. And that's where a lot of places in the GTA are now. That's where Mississauga was, and it's going to be office from now on. They're into the types of uses that I think you might have in mind. Brampton is not too far away. Even Vaughan is getting there. They're building an office building at the end of the subway. So the uses that you're talking about, you can attract a few of them, but to get the bulk, the cluster that you might want, you need to have the momentum. It's a second or a third-phase development. So I think, and I'm not going to get ahead of ourselves, but one of the things that I would want to think about in the strategy is that timing, sort of like the pause that we were debating on Canada Post, and whether or not there is a need to take a pause down there while the airport fills up, while we deal with the constraints in Red Hill, while that fills up, while we fill up the rest of Stony Creek. Because as the employment grows and the population grows, and the GO station gets in, and the residential starts taking off, the community starts picking up energy, and we're already seeing it on HES with the art galleries and the gentrification, and like, don't get me going on the difference in housing prices. So, you know, like I said at the end of the presentation, we really are at an incredible pitch, just the beginning of an incredible period of uplift. So the timing issue, to me, is critical, and the extent to which we embed that in a policy, we're going to have to determine that with a bit more work.
I appreciate that. And I just, it's tiring to see the, it's portrayed as a weakness for the city for so many years, and it should be seen as an opportunity. There's so many, I mean, there are vacant parking lots, there are buildings with nobody working them anymore. And every report we get says that, and you just said it, you're only going to get new investment on greenfield properties. Not only, you're going to get the type, the new, modern investments and the type that everyone's
You're going to get the Maple Leafs and
The type everyone's courting today, they want to move to greenfield. And at some point in time, I need someone to put a report in front of me and say, here's how we attract them to the vacant land that you have in the Bayfront corridor from this point to this point, and this is the formula that's going to make it work. It sounds like it's not happening elsewhere. I mean, I think the only reason why Toronto's brownfield properties are being swallowed up are land prices are crazy, and people are looking for everything within the urban boundary to make a go of it, and it's just pure economics. We don't have that pressure here. And so in the absence of having those real estate pressures, that land sits, and no one's looking to invest there.
That's why the timing issue is so important, because they have, there's so much momentum on the side of Toronto that hasn't quite built up here now.
So we think that with 150,000 new Canadians coming to Ontario every year, in Southern Ontario every year, that the pressures on, you know, the Greater Toronto, Hamilton area are becoming that much larger. Your decision to put the GO train station in that area is genius, because that's the ready infrastructure right into downtown Toronto. So the catalyst that that'll provide for some of the new opportunities in the area are strong. It will take time, everything takes time, but the catalyst that will be, will be a wonderful starting point. And then you say, where do you build from there, and what does it look like? Anecdotally, as we've been involved in all these projects with Hamilton, I speak with our pension fund clients, the big real estate developers, and say, hey, what do you think about this area? It's like, you know, show us some property, and we'll see if it works. Does that make sense for us? And what is the long-term play? And they are very much long-term players, and so we'll talk about what that looks like in the future for Hamilton.
Thank you for that. My last question, have you been retained for the Bayfront Secondary Plan to help us with that? Or is this, maybe it's a better question for our staff. I know that we're doing some pre-studies for the secondary planning process. Maybe through you, Mr. Chairman, to Neil or someone else?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, they have been retained for the Bayfront Strategy.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I know that Neil and I have had a number of discussions about other areas that I sort of identified and touched on, but we haven't really taken advantage of it. You talked about the province and I've been reading through the reports in regards to some initiatives that they've had in regards to these power trips to different markets internationally. When I was at FCM, one of the discussions we had was that there seems to be, first of all, there's an understanding that economies are evolving metroly, metro economies, and not necessarily within one municipality, but within metro regions throughout the country. And there's another understanding and a discussion going on, what role does the federal government have in regards to what is called, well, I think there's an assumption there's an organized chaos out there. Let's unorganize chaos, let's organize that chaos in regards to sectorial development throughout the country in metro economies. What role does the federal government have in doing that? So that discussion through a working group at FCM was established over years ago. I'm not sure where they are at this point. But the reason I raise that is because we are within a region. We're not standalone when we're talking about who we're trying to attract, type of businesses and advantages and disadvantages that we have. When I look at this, this is really insular in regards to Hamilton, but again, when we're talking about a metro region, it goes beyond that in regards to our abilities to attract investment as well as create a greater export and opportunity for the city of Hamilton. So there's nothing in here about that in regards to that metro economy approach?
We were hoping to get at that through step A, which is recasting the value proposition because when, when large life sciences or biotech firms are looking for, say, a Canadian operation, they're not, they're not thinking of, they're not thinking of necessarily Toronto or Hamilton, like the city of Toronto proper. They're thinking about the GTA, they're thinking about Calgary, they're thinking about Vancouver. And in the number of respects, big firms, and I think we talked about this a little in the report, they're agnostic in their initial attempts. So recasting the value proposition is, Hamilton has a great value proposition and it's well understood and it's getting better understood by the moment, I think, in the marketplace. Recasting the value proposition is recognizing that from an FDI perspective, a slightly different approach is required. So it's positioning yourself, and these are marketing materials that don't exist right now, positioning yourself as part of that integrated Southern Ontario economy. So when you have interest from, say, a major pharmaceutical corporation in Ontario and the Southern Ontario market, Hamilton is able to position itself as being part of that discussion. Now, let's go see Hamilton, let's go see Burlington, let's go see Kitchener-Watari. And when we talk about, and that is part of the marketing plan that I think is one of the more important ones as far as the action plan is concerned because it's a slightly different take on the value proposition. Competing with Mississauga and Brampton, you're correct, is a very local thing. But competing with Calgary and Vancouver requires a recasting of the value proposition. So that's what we were hoping to get at through that first step there.
Okay. And I think that's important because I think through economic scale and utilizing the resources on a larger metro area certainly holds that geographic area in good stead in attracting new investment into those corridors, which advantages everybody, in my humble opinion. And Hamilton would be a benefactor of that approach. So I just wanted to make sure that that isn't lost on us. The other piece is in the provincial offices that they've set out, I think R N Cs or whatever they're called, what exactly, if I walked into an office in Beijing, if there's one there, what do I actually see? Do we know what they're actually marketing in those offices?
I think they're marketing Canada in general. I don't know in particular, you know, I can tell you that we spend a lot of time on this topic within our firm. You know, somebody in China or India will have a question about Canada, how can we invest here? So within our own firm, we're doing that as well. And often in relationship with the various government offices, they'll have a ton of information, a ton of standard documentation available for some of the key business decisions.
Yeah, and that's why this step of the action plan, I can't quite reach up there, but just above hand and games, that's why that's really important.
Okay.
I think the most recent one is an international marketing office. I think the most recent one is in Sao Paulo and they market Canada and they market Ontario. And so as they are doing this and the leads come in and opportunities arise, it's very important to be on their radar screen. And the economic development staff does that now. It needs to be maintained. I mean, you really, you need to be in there every two or three months in their face, reminding them that it's not all about steel. So that when those opportunities arise and they choose where to distribute, they think of Hamilton. So that's why that step is important and that was intended to pull in, I believe, what you're talking about.
Exactly what I'm talking about.
And through our conversations with your economic development group, they've been outstanding in reaching out globally to some of these initiatives and opportunities and some of the conferences that we've mentioned, they've been very, very good.
Great. I appreciate that. The other question that is obvious to me is, Hamilton, you know, I can't speak to other communities, but we have a wealth of riches that we really is untapped. And that is the fact that we have McMaster, which has got a huge international component to it. We got Economy International Schools, which has a huge international component to it. We have a number of businesses in this community that already have significant international network. And the question I have, and it's sort of covered in there, but it's not really focused on as a laser beam, how are we taking those synergies and energies and culminating into an action plan?
Yeah, that falls under community partnerships and I believe at the back of the report or at the, towards the end of the report, we have the listing of the action items, the specific items to be undertaken. This was our attempt to condense, I think it's probably 10 or 12 pages of specific actions. And so again, very much like, very much like the provincial partnerships, it just means leveraging those opportunities. It means being out there, talking to them, understanding what's going on. It's feet on the street, it's resources from economic development.
So to take it the next level, you think about some international student coming to Columbia or McMaster or Mohawk, that student then becomes familiar with the Hamilton community, their parents come back and forth and visits and all the rest, then they decide to invest and stay in Hamilton. That's, you know, the whole immigrant entrepreneur, the whole opportunity to foster that whole food chain with respect to going back into the country. Vancouver, I'm told, has more Asian billionaires in Canada, or sorry, in the world because it's been able to attract a lot of that international marketplace. So I think the same opportunities here in Hamilton. And how do you then take that and leverage it through the community partnerships and the immigrant entrepreneurs?
Exactly. I mean, I've always said that we underestimate who live or attend school here in Hamilton today. And the question is, how do we tap into that? I mean, a lot of the people in our international school programs are coming from well-to-do people in those countries that are involved either in high-level government or high-level business. And that's what we're dealing with on an everyday basis.
That's why, I really can't reach this one. That's why the one above, the one that we just talked about, the investment partnership is also important as well. Because that's a room full of people, Jed's not here right now. But if it doesn't include those players, it probably should. And that's wrapped up in the recommendation to formalize that partnership because you need to have at least some vehicle to identify the opportunity and then have the resources to pursue it.
Okay, and just two more questions. The other one is more political. And the political side of it is, what I, my observation, and it may not be everybody else, it may not even agree, that's fine. My observation though is that whether it's federal or provincial government, they have their favorites in regards to sectorial developments. You know, I mean, some would argue that one of Harper's favorites is the oil industry, you know, the oil sands, the piping. You know, agriculture's not as hot on his radar in regards to sectorial development as it is in the oil industry. And then provincially, it might be the green energy side of things. So I guess, how do we, as a city, cut through the fact that the province really has their mindset on very narrow, in some cases, very narrow areas of foreign investment in this province?
It's maintaining exposure. As you're correct, that there might be some, there might be political preferences. I don't think you need to worry about doing oil sands in Hamilton, for example. So, you know, you're just excluded from that market period. It's about maintaining exposure with the province and the feds. Because at the end of the day, their mandate is not necessarily to play favorites per se, it's to make money for the province. So if Hamilton's value proposition is overwhelmingly superior to the other four people on the table, it's going to be a phone call that says, you know, I'm so sorry, we have to, you know, we have to pursue Hamilton on this, they've got everything on your list and they're way ahead of everyone else. So it's right down there in the outreach priorities. So it's just, again, it's exposure and it's resources from economic development.
And the last question. We're advantaged by the oil industries in regards to providing products out of Hamilton. So it's not necessarily a negative thing. I'm talking about the export side of it.
Yeah.
The K zoning currently in the waterfront. So we have the greenfields that we talked about in Red Hill, where it seems to be the food and beverage makes sense, from a branding point of view, they're going to want greenfields. They don't want to be close to associated to or anything that may have any taint to it in any way. That's just the nature of the industry. Is that correct?
Sorry, for the greenfield?
Correct. Food and beverage. We focus on food and beverage, for example, type industries. It's pretty hard to get them attracted to a brownfield.
Yeah, I mean, there's a certain, there's a certain group of employment land industrial type users for which a brownfield site will not be attractive, period. It's like, for example, if you're looking for a new house and you want 3,500 square feet and Metris gives you a call and says, I've got a 3,400, I've got a 3,500 square foot condo at the corner of King and Bay, you'll say no to that because you want a house. It's just you're just not interested in that product. So if the response is, yes, we would like you to come to Hamilton, but we'd like to put you on a brownfield, what comes back is probably going to be, thanks very much for going to Branford or London. So you're correct, there's a class of use that just prefers, that just prefers greenfield development. So as we were talking about before, I think that element of the equation needs to be there to build the energy and to get the growth going because over time, you do get other uses to do on a brownfield location.
So what's happening with around us, Toronto GTA, do you see the K zoning as an advantage, a positive in Hamilton?
Know what, and this might be a bit of a different way of looking at it, in the short term and notwithstanding other objectives for the bayfront, to the extent that nobody else really is willing to accommodate some of the uses that are available in the K zoning, it's a competitive advantage from an assessment and an industrial growth perspective. It's not necessarily consistent with the vision. So I think that somehow that balance is going to need to be struck in the bayfront strategy because it, from a purely assessment and new investment-driven perspective, there are uses that, for which you are probably the only place in the GTA that could be accommodated.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Counselor Collins.
Counselor, through the chair, I really liked this report. I've done, before I retired and became a councillor, which was only two weeks, two months ago, I worked specifically in Asia-Pacific and in marketing and in sales. And I'll just tell you a little bit about my experience if I could. We did very well in Europe and in Asia and in Europe, but we promoted ourselves a lot. We were in the pharmaceutical manufacturing business. And some of the areas you think aren't promotable, maybe you do think, but a lot of people don't. Bangladesh, tons of money there, looking for, looking for places to build. India's another one. China's another one. Some of our best customers come from there. But the other thing I wanted to emphasize is that our company purposely did promotion to bring the customer to our place. Once we showed them what we could offer, once we showed them we were a modern company, we did everything properly, we tested our stuff properly, that was the selling point. So there's two parts to this, I think. And I think the part I haven't heard much about, but maybe I'm just deaf on that part, is promoting the city of Hamilton and not just promoting the greenfield or, you know, promoting Hamilton. You know, Hamilton is one of the best cities in Canada, I think, for their natural resources, for the escarpment. How many places have an escarpment? How many places have all the waterfalls that we have? How many places have the transportation to the States through Detroit and through Niagara Falls? And I don't think, my impression is, after being here two months, that we promote that part of it enough. If we can get them here, I think we can have a lot better chance of having them invest in our area. Our downtown, we're getting condos now, we've got a couple going and I'm sure there could be 20 condos in here. We've got a lot of advantages that Toronto doesn't have. We've got a lot of events that Vaughan or Mississauga doesn't have. But I don't know if we're taking advantage of it to the extent that we could. But saying all that, I'm really happy that we're starting to get some momentum here. And it might be just my lack of experience, not knowing what happened in the last five years, but this is what we have to be doing. And this plan isn't for one or, this plan will change every year if we're going to be proactive. You know, we can't be reactive and hope somebody from China phones in and says, hi, have you got any land for me? Because we're just going to waste our money. We really got to be proactive. So I'm very glad I hear anyways that we do trade shows or conferences or whatever in these countries because there's billions of dollars in Asia-Pacific, just billions of dollars. And my company, my company I worked for before, not my company, would agree with that. And we put a lot of time and effort into that area to prove that point. So I don't have any questions for it, but I just wanted to make some comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We should say that, actually Counselor Collins mentioned in our prior report on the advanced manufacturing sector, we actually profiled all the benefits of Hamilton as well, as well as there's some challenges, but there's a ton of benefits. I live here locally, we love the place, there's a lot going on for Hamilton and sharing that message as much as possible, I think, is great.
And if you don't like taking people over the Skyway, take them through the 403 through Coots Paradise. Because I've heard from other people, that's a great way to come into the city. So, you know, there's more than one way to skin a cat and we have to take advantage of it.
Yeah, and I should just add one more thing, the little boxes that Counselor Collins was reading. We do devote a few pages in the strategy to talk about how, you know, everything that you've said is correct, but from an FDI perspective, unfortunately, the perception is different and it's extremely important that that perception be corrected. So it's definitely a part of the strategy.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And again, kind of echoing Counselor Connelly's words, it's been very useful to kind of go through this. And the guy's a very small, small, small business-minded person. I found it interesting, particularly around the competitive advantage aspects. And I guess my question through the deputy mayor to the presenters, and either one can feel free to answer, given the sectors that you've identified as having the highest competitive advantage for this city, if you were to open a business as a foreign company, which sector would you focus on and give priority to?
I would buy several houses to begin with, given the price differential between Hamilton and Toronto and that's a real competitive advantage, I would focus on the food industry.
Food?
I would focus on the food industry. You've got the land supply coming on stream, which is a huge advantage in the growth plan context. You've got Maple Leaf, you've got Canada Bread, you've got the infrastructure, you've got the port, notwithstanding our position on what that or how that might affect the bayfront strategy. You have grains, you have, you know, you have seed oils, you have stuff going in and out from rural Hamilton and then Ontario to the rest of the world. You're one of the few places that has that multimodal connection. You've got some energy, there's a corridor running straight through into Kitchener-Watari. It's, to me, if I was to pick something now, it would probably be food. If I was looking a little longer, I would be looking to downtown Hamilton for some brick and beam tech applications because that's how Toronto's done it. And I would build on pipeline studios. You're probably not, and we talked about this in the strategy, you're very unlikely to get a tier-one provider like, say, a Facebook or a Google or something like that. But there are a ton of tier-two opportunities that would be more than happy to take some rundown brick and beam building over there at very, very cheap rents because that's the sort of thing that they need. So temporally, that's how I would do it.
I would pick a different sector. I would pick healthcare because, you know, I'm from the community, spent a lot of time at McMaster and the whole healthcare sector, and I think there's a real gold mine there. You combine that with tech and to the Microsoft commercial at Super Bowl and you think about what's possible in this community. Toronto certainly has its identity, Hamilton is gold in that area. If you accelerate that even further, and again, to Anthony's point, as a real estate developer, you know, vision, the whole downtown right through to the West Harbour, to me is a future gold mine for you. And that will be the transition and transformation of the city.
So just to get some clarity on that, because we had a great presentation this morning from the president, Dr. Patrick Dean, on McMaster's plans here in Hamilton. And with regards to the municipality, I know when we shift to institutional, do we get the same tax assessments when we have this kind of growth in some of our prime real estate markets through institutional expansion, like healthcare and universities? You know?
Yeah, no, I think that the top-level answer is no, I can't give you details because it relates to, it relates to the rate and the assessed value. So if the rates are the same, you know, a higher value use would generate more revenue.
But when you commercialize the businesses, when they do their research out of Mac and they've got some commercialized business, which you know that there's gold mine there, that's where you take advantage of the tax benefits going forward?
Reed, thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, last question. And I can completely concur with the assessment on healthcare, certainly that's the direction we've been going in. So I'm kind of interested in seeing an opportunity in food and that it hasn't been front and center in my mind in terms of branding Hamilton and what we might be doing if we were to go fishing internationally. So given that assessment, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you- So given that assessment, Mr Deputy Mayor, through you, I'm always trying to make sure I do that, globally, where would the trends point to if we were to go to a specific region or country looking for direct investment in food?
Yeah, South America, Brazil is very, very large, could be a tough market to crack. Actually, as we talk about in our export, we've done a lot of work on exports, the United States is actually starting to look like not such a great target for things like food. Colombia, Peru, Chile, a lot of the countries that'll be here in a few months for the Pan Am Games.
Excellent, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. And to go on the public record through you to our mayor, should there ever be a junket to Brazil or any other Latin American countries, do know that I speak Spanish. Thank you.
Hey, councillor Marilla.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, and I appreciate the report, and it's similar to what we've heard in the past in reports related to this problem. My issue is though, the fundamental concern that we have as a city and as a council is the fact that 83% of our assessment base is related to residential taxes, and 17% is related to the industrial commercial sector. Fifty years ago, it was entirely reversed. So that number, that 17, needs to improve. And although we're talking about ways of doing it, I'm not, we're not seeing the tangible results. So the bottom line is this, how do we increase the inventory of land and the inventory of investors and match the two so we see tangible growth, even if it's one example a year, where we can ultimately get to a point where, because I hear Canada Bread, and I'm proud of that, but we keep on repeating ourselves with Canada Bread. So we want 20 more Canada Breads. How do we get there?
Well, the city still has a bit of a land supply problem, as you know, but that's going to change. I believe the airport growth district is, I'm not sure if we have a decision yet, but I know we have minutes of settlement.
Yeah.
So once that appeal is exhausted, it will be to this council to determine the speed at which the services are put in. I know that Orla probably still has a bit of supply in the former airport industrial area, but it'll come down to a servicing question, it'll come down to the speed of servicing, and similarly for Red Hill. Some of the servicing constraints and the planning needs to be sorted out in there, but once those lands come on stream, it'll be a discussion on where to prioritize the municipal infrastructure investment.
Which now brings me to my next point. What comes first, the actual development of the infrastructure, or do we find the investor first and then match the actual development so that we're not spending tens of millions of dollars on infrastructure that we're not sure is in demand, and then taking away from areas that are in demand, particularly in the older part of the city?
So our bias would be, anything that has a solid business case, you invest in. So hope and prayer is not a policy, and it's not a good plan. So once you actually have something out there that's real, that will happen, be it a joint venture developer who wants to put energy and whatnot into the actual development itself, then you can accelerate your own investment at the same time.
So how do we, and just good old school sales approach, how do we pick up the phone, find the investors, match it with the land that we have either now or in the future, and just literally have something tangible, so we're not talking about getting something tangible in the future?
So if you recall when we defined what foreign direct investment was at the very beginning, we said we didn't want to keep the definition that it's just land in the elephants, right? The 80/20 rule applies that 80% of your economic development will come from within the community. So all of the wonderful community programs that you have to foster and grow kind of the existing business platform, I think, is exactly where you want to spend the lion's share of your energy toward. Of course, you have to go to the global conferences, you have to play in that arena, as we've suggested, but you really buckle down on your existing businesses and attract them. So when a CEO has a client from Asia or China or whatever, you know, I'm sure you're doing this already, having lunch with the mayor, and all of those other things that I think are really important in terms of embedding your existing business network.
Okay. Another thing about that approach, or just picking up the phone and or literally, I'm saying that more figuratively than literally, but connecting, matching our inventory with the investment, is that migration, whether that be individuals or companies, seems to follow one another. Whether it be a small village in Sicily, when one comes over and phones the other and says, great place to come over, and now in Hamilton we have a large number of people from that one village. I'm not seeing that type of synergy or that type of communication or linkage or flow or at all, to be quite frank. And I'm wondering why, because in Toronto you do see it. You'll see the venture capitalists, you'll see the consistency of some of their investments and where it's coming from, and it seems to have built a relationship that's trustworthy on both sides of the fence. So how do we get to that point of?
You build the momentum. And that's why the greenfield land supply is such a critical issue. And in a way, once that land comes on stream, the market will take care of it for you. You're not per se going to need to worry about matching up Maple Leafs with a particular food because Orlando will do that for you. And we know that there's a tremendous amount of interest in Red Hill. I remember writing reports on the Red Hill Creek Expressway, saying, you know what, this thing needs to be finished as soon as possible, and as soon as you hook it into Dartmouth, this place is going to fly, you won't be able to sell it fast enough. That's what happened with Canada Bread, and that's what happened with Maple Leaf. That is what's going to happen with the airport. There's a lot of interest around the airport. So again, it has to do with the timing of development, so it's building the energy and it'll come with the energy.
Okay. And also with respect to, and I think it was alluded to by councillor Whitehead, provincial and federal components and how they play a role in providing incentives, because we're very limited, as you know, in providing incentives to foreign entities. Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, what linkages do we have with both the province and the federal government to ensure that we get our fair share of the pie?
Your economic development staff. That's them right there, is making sure that the exposure is maintained, closed, and that when the opportunities come and when the incentive packages are being discussed, Hamilton is at the table.
And the good news is that they are very much in touch with those personalities so that when the opportunities come, they're absolutely at the table for those. So there are connections being made there right now.
And I guess for my, to sum it up basically, is that the 87/17 percent, 83, sorry, presidential tax assessment dependency versus the 13, or 17, sorry, of industrial commercial needs to be reversed. But I think because we continually talk about measures to reverse it, and we do have some wins, we don't have enough wins and the tangible components, I believe, is what we're looking for. And I'd like to start measuring those tangible wins on a year-to-year basis, and then five years and 10 years, and start evaluating where we were and where we're headed, because that number hasn't changed much in the last few years.
No, but it will change. It will change significantly over the period to 2031. If you haven't had a chance to read the, it's a bit dry, I apologize for this, but if you look at the growth forecast at the back of the growth plan, just do a calculation of population to employment in 2001, get one of the old plans, and then do a calculation of population to employment in 2031, and you'll see a big shift. Now, this doesn't account for any changes in tax policy or, you know, adjustments to like assessment adjustments, but there's no question that, and this is an issue that arose repeatedly in the airport hearing, there's no question that the economic future of Hamilton is going to be much, much, much different than its past. So like we've always said, it's, you're at the beginning of an exciting period. So it might not happen as fast as we would like, but there is very little question that it will happen over the long term.
And lastly, with respect to reversing old patterns that have led to the negative perception of Hamilton, particularly the Skyway example, and I think it was alluded to by councillor Collins as well, in that we're attracting a certain element that continually attracts itself, and it compounds the problem rather than reversing the problem. So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I know that I have a situation in my own area in a northerly part near Burlington Street, where somebody would like to actually take an old factory, demolish it, and put in a residential area, but because of legislation, provincial legislation is not permitted to do so because of its proximity to the industrial core. So we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't, and we're trying to reverse the trend that's led to the perception of Hamilton, yet when someone wants to invest, there's legislation preventing that type of investment because of its proximity to the old part of the city. So a lot of the obstacles that we're faced with in Hamilton is unique to Hamilton, and what we should have as well, over and above the inventory of investment and landmass is also unique characteristics such as that, that we need to lobby both the province and the federal government to allow us the autonomy to make those decisions in unique circumstances so that we can attract that type of investment. So your thoughts on that and how we would go about doing that?
I think that the Bayfront strategy in combination with the West Harbour strategy, looking at the entire waterfront, I think is your absolute opportunity to tackle that. Because I don't know that, to this point, you've had a lot of traditional businesses there, so you say, what are we doing during the transformation period? What do you do on a block-by-block basis to actually, you know, enhance and foster that change and that evolution of land uses?
Okay. And lastly, on that same point, as an example, Centre Mall, I'd love to see, and I spoke to, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the redevelopment centre, I'm sure you are, and in saying that, I'd love to see mixed use there and have residential built right on the premises, either on top of existing buildings and/or some of the vacant parcels. But at present, I'm not sure, because of its proximity, that it's permitted. So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, no, it's very interesting. The question of your older industrial use is more of a planning question, and it does relate to provincial policy, but it also relates more to the Hamilton official plan. So part of the reason why that's probably not shown as residential is because we have the nodes and corridors concept, and that is sort of how the long-term vision of the city has been contemplated by planning for quite some time, since about 2004. I think the Centre Mall issue is more of a market issue. Because if I recall correctly, that's in an area that you might be able to do mixed use. I'm not sure if it's in the urban growth centre, but I would have to look at it.
The new, under the secondary plan.
Okay, so I mean, that would be more an issue of market demand, whether or not the market would support those units, even though you have some high-density residential happening right now.
Oh, no, the market's been determined to be viable.
Okay.
It was because of the environmental concerns and the proximity to the industrial area that posed a problem. And that may be, from the market perspective, why they weren't interested, but not because of the viability of the market, but the perception of legislation preventing housing and the proximity of housing within the industrial core. Well, I might be mistaken on that, but if Jason Thorne is in the room, is he in?
Neil?
Or Neil?
Or?
It's a planning question, so it would be unfair to ask Neil this. Jason Thorne is not in the room, so perhaps I'll take this offline just to get clarity on it. But there is a correlating problem with it, and Neil won't be able to answer this question, so I won't put him on the spot there. But it is a relevant issue when it comes to the mixed development and trying to reverse some of the past problems that we created through the over-intensification of the heavy industrial. Thanks.
Thank you. We have two more speakers, the second time. councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. And Anthony, you mentioned something earlier that I guess it's disappointing to hear, and I thought I heard you say that, you know, we're getting an influx of industries coming to Hamilton for that K zoning land because they can't find it elsewhere. And when I start to look at some of those investments, I use the gasification as an example, it's unlikely that operations like that can find a home elsewhere in southern Ontario because the regulations just don't permit it. And our K industry, unfortunately, it's an anything-go scenario, there really are no standards associated with it. And hopefully that secondary planning process gets us on the road to implementing standards that start to limit the type of uses that located in that area. I asked a question earlier whether you have been retained for the secondary planning process, and I thought I heard you say that we'd have to press the pause button for maybe five years and just allow that to take its course while the greenfields fill up, which is concerning to me. So I put that on the table, and I just want your response there because your response to councillor Whitehead was, you're seeing a lot of companies come to Hamilton, taking advantage of the K industry, and it's probably not the type of industry in some cases that our residents may want.
Okay. I'm not sure that I said that. If I did, it's not correct. If I recall, the question was whether or not that K zoning is a competitive advantage.
Right.
And to the extent that it doesn't really exist anywhere else in the GTA, yes, it's at a minimum a comparative advantage. Now, whether or not you want to capitalize on that by just letting whomever you want in, that's an issue that we're going to have to balance in the Bayfront strategy.
Which is the current strategy we have now.
Which is?
There are no standards under K industry, so anyone can locate here essentially who has an industrial operation.
Correct. So that's an issue that's going to be addressed under the Bayfront employment strategy.
Right, okay.
So, sorry, remind me what the second part there was?
I understand the positive aspect of allowing.
Right, oh, it was the pause.
Yes, it was the five-year scenario you spoke of.
The pause was simply to illustrate that, in terms of the type of uses that you're likely to get in an area like that, those tend to be later-stage uses that you see in the city of Toronto, the older areas of Brampton, Northwood, and you're just not there yet. Because you don't have the pace of residential or employment growth or the scale that some of the other larger cities have had. So my intention was to suggest that an element of the strategy might be to assess whether or not it would be a good idea to pause, restrict things for a while, to see if we have appetite or pick up for some of the uses that are a bit more consistent with what I think you might have in mind.
Thank you for the clarification, Anthony.
I have to add two bits to that. So of course, the whole Bayfront strategy will kind of guide what you want your future to look like, you'll go through a transformation, and the real estate community is very opportunistic. So as soon as they smell an opportunity to change something from a less desirable use to a highly desirable use, it'll happen. So I think there's a transformation that you're going through, and we need to plan.
And that's very positive, because I think the port's operating in the reverse. It's if there's a limit on the opportunity to lease something to anyone, there'll be pushback there, and that's something we'll certainly debate through the secondary planning process, but it's good to know that we'll have the real estate community on our side.
Thank you. Now, our last speaker, Mayor?
No, I'm just going to move to receive the presentation.
Second, councillor Collins, all those in favor? Any gains? Carrie, thank you very kindly, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I want to remind council here, we're going to have, we're running in pretty late the way this is going, we're only halfway there, so we don't want to lose corn. So we'll have some pizza or whatever that may be on order for later on, but we still got a long way to go on this agenda, so.
We don't have to break over to six, Mr Deputy.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to let them know that we're not going to be there. Is it 4:30?
Well, there's no way we're going to finish by 4:30. Well, if you want to go over, councillor, that's not a problem. We got to finish off here. Ken Corry, will you please come up for your presentation, please?
Members of council, I'm happy to be here today to start our review of the Public Art Master Plan. We're going to take about 20 minutes, go through why we're doing this review, an overview of the current Public Art Master Plan to refresh everybody about this document. We'll be discussing the benefits, the current public art process. We'll also be talking about other types of art, and we'll be finishing off with our consultation plan. We have here a copy of the Public Art Master Plan undertaken by the Culture and Culture Division in 2008, approved by council in 2009. We're hoping that this will guide our work for the next 10 to 15 years, so we're looking to identify 10 to 15 new projects as we move forward. And we're also looking to evaluate the current policies and procedures of the plan. Now, the last plan had 14 sites, most of which we've completed or addressed. I'll go through them very quickly. Number one, King William Art Walk, you can see it on the map here, I apologize for the size of the text, this is actually a part of the document, Public Art Master Plan, it's available on the city's website. Sites two and 14 are underway right now, Ancaster Memorial Square and Field Coat. You'll be seeing consultation on those in the next week or two. Site three, Dundas Driving Park, we've completed one project there, our second one's on its way, and we'll also be out for consultation in the next couple of weeks. Sites four, eight, and nine, the QBW Crossing, the Red Hill Valley Trails and waterfront trails, we're working with Landscape Architectural Services and combining those with the work in Confederation Park, and hoping to roll those forward into our consultation. Number five, Battlefield Park, we've completed, was installed last year. Gage Park, the fountain was redone there, and we hope to roll up. Gage Park, the fountain was redone there, and we hope to roll a future public art project into Gage Park as well, as we move forward with consultation. James Street, Escarpment to the Bay, we've completed four projects. Number 10, Bim Brook, we completed a consultation there, but in the end, the public response wasn't good, so that project, along with the jury's approval, with the councillor's approval, and with staff support, was canceled. 11 York Boulevard has been through a bunch of studies, secondary planning, transportation planning, we hope to roll that again forward into our consultation as we move forward. Here at City Hall, we've had a study, a donation of a statue, the Gandhi statue, and Gore Park has got three public art projects coming forward that are in part of the phasing under the Gore Park Master Plan. We've also got direction to move forward based on the culture plan that was approved in 2013. Recommendations to develop and animate public spaces and places in the following action items. Renew and keep working on the Public Art Master Plan, develop public art policies and strategies to enhance urban design and development projects, promote the inclusion of public art and other public realm enhancements and new private developments, and develop and implement community art, the community art portion of the Art in Public Places program. So we hope to be addressing those as we go forward as well through this consultation. But we're going to give you a quick primer now on the current Public Art Master Plan and some definitions, just so we get it clear moving forward. Public art is defined by the city of Hamilton as art created by artists or in collaboration with artists through a public process and existing in publicly accessible city of Hamilton property. So these are works of art that are selected for the public, by the public. I should also point out, I've done a number of these presentations over the past 10 to 15 years on urban design and public art, and it's very nice to be able to say that all the images you'll see in this presentation are Hamilton images. So quickly, benefits of public art. Public art creates a clear sense of community pride and identity. Public art creates cultural links through the promotion of opportunities for community development, community engagement, and community partnerships. This is the Aboriginal piece in Battlefield Park. Public art improves and enhances the built environment. Everyone will recognize James Street Art Crawl. Public art reflects Hamilton's cultural heritage, fosters an understanding of the city's unique identity and history, and presents the cultural identity of Hamilton to visitors. This is a piece down on Ottawa Street. Public art enhances tourism and economic development, creating an overall sense of place. Most people will recognize this, associated with our Harbour Front. Public art contributes to the development of a more pleasant, safe, and viable community. This is a piece of art in Carter Park that will be located along that concrete wall you see there, 10-foot-by-70-foot mural by artist Bryce Huffman. We hope to be going in in 215. So we'd also like to just review the principles of the Public Art Master Plan, the, the goals we've used to move forward in dealing with artists and commissioning art. Public art strengthens an individual, individual soul and the collective soul of the city, encourages new ideas and reflects a variety of artistic expression, demonstrates excellence in creativity and design, will enhance and be reflective of our community, hence the public process, will take into account public security, will retain the artist's original intent through appropriate conservation and maintenance practices, will retain the moral rights of the artist, and finally, public art evolves openly through approved city of Hamilton policies, procedures, and processes. So the importance of a public art policy. This is a great image from the 1950s, former mayor Jackson trying to figure out a piece of art that was in front of the Health Building. This is actually across from the present Ghost Station, and you can see he's a bit bemused. This is a piece of art that urban designers and public art people would call plop art. Not necessarily a bad piece of art, but a piece of art that doesn't really relate to its site, or to the story, or to the history of the place. This is the kind of art we try to avoid through our public art process. So the benefits of our process. Encourage and facilitates creative participation, makes artists and citizens feel part of the process, encourages, ensures transparency and equitable adjudication, so people feel they've been treated fairly and their voice has been heard, fosters community building, a greater understanding of their community and why what art is where, increases the likelihood that the art will be accepted and embraced, and decreases the likelihood of vandalism. I'm sorry about this slide, I know it seems horrifically bureaucratic, but this is the outline of the Public Art Master. The public art process, very thorough, that was approved by this council is as a call for artist policy in 2012. I just want to go really quickly through it. Essentially, initial public consultation through a focus group or a community meeting is paramount to kind of, what are the goals and themes for this public art? What are we trying to achieve in doing this? Stage two, an initial submission, where we put the word out far and wide, we're looking for an artist, we want proposals for art. At this point, we need to kind of sign on the dotted line with our procurement people and say we've committed to the budget for this project before we can put out this kind of RFP or call for artist document. Three, we shortlist adjudica, we shortlist up to six projects, a jury of citizens actually does that work. Artists are paid an honorarium to make a more detailed submission. That submission, number five, is reviewed by staff to make sure it's technically feasible. We're not getting ourselves into anything that's going to cost us a fortune down the line, or isn't going to work. Six, the jury interviews the artist to make sure there's a clear understanding of their goals on the technical issues. Seven, the proposals are put on the public website, are put out for public consultation on the city's website, and usually at a location close to the site of the art. And we take public comments, preferred piece, any major issues with the artwork. And finally, all this comes back to the jury for final adjudication, and they decide on which artist and which proposal. Then the artist, we enter into a contract with the artist and work on actually getting the piece fabricated. So depending on the complications, how complicated the piece is, that can take anywhere from three months to a year, and depending on the process, here it can take anyone to three, three to eight months. Again, public consultation and citizen juries, this public consultation is an extremely important part of our process. The themes and goals are set by the public upfront, usually working with artists to make sure we haven't put too prescriptive a goal on it. Shortlisted proposals are proposed, are posted on the city's website, displayed for public comment. And finally, it's a jury of citizens with diverse interests in the project and the community, community that decides on the successful proposal and the artist. Over the past five years, we've had over 5200 people involved in selecting public art in the city. Maintenance and conservation is important, if we want to achieve the benefits and meet the principles we've outlined, it's important the public artist taken care of. You can see examples here of some public art that didn't work out very well. The central, central images of a great community mural that was painted on West Avenue School that had to be decommissioned. And you can see on the right what happens to the turtles at Gage Park. They've since been restored, and the great thing about looking at maintenance materials for public art upfront is when you choose a great material like bronze, pretty much no matter what happens to it, it can be restored and maintained quite easily, and has a good life cycle costing. So a contribution of 10% of each of our public art budgets goes to a conservation and maintenance fund to keep the artwork in good shape. Funding public art. We get capital funding allocation annually, it's ranged between $71,000 and $250,000 per year, depending on budget pressures. We get specific capital project funding for new projects. For example, Battlefield Park was paid for from a capital fund associated with the, the park redo. Partnerships with outside agencies, we're presently sharing funding for public artwork at the James North Ghost Station with Metro Links for $50,000. The downtown public art reserve, a really innovative idea from downtown renewal that allows developers to contribute to money to art in the downtown, and finally, individual councillors' area rating. Statistics, since 2009, we've completed 40 projects, approximately 20 of those have been full public art calls. We've had over 48 public and jury meetings, over 5200 people have been part of our process, consulted through our process. We've received over 175 submissions, we have one staff person. So in going up to the public, we usually ask them to look at three different scales of, of public art projects, but these are defined in the master plan. 15 to 75,000 is for smaller projects. You can see there the timeline, Sightline Bench from James Street North, it tells the history of the buildings across the street. And in councillor Partridge's Ward, a graphic that was installed in the new, I think it's Harry Howell Arena. Medium-scale projects, 75 to 200,000, of which we have a number in the city, often a tighter site, more pedestrian scale, the Dressmakers Mannequin, and the new raising the barn proposal at the Market would be examples of that. And finally, the larger-scale public art pieces, where a piece is working as a gateway, or has a large site, or a really significant cultural attribution at 200,000 plus. But we want to also be clear, up to this point in the presentation, I've been talking about public art. There's a lot of art out in the city, art in public places. So not all art out there is public art. Art in public places is art that is not work located, that is work, sorry, located on publicly accessible city or private property, but was not selected through a public process. You can see examples of it here, the Gandhi statue at City Hall, the new Tim Horton statue on Ottawa Street, and there's an example of Ghost Barn, which is some temporary public art that was associated with Supercrawl. So going forward, we'll be looking at ways to help encourage this kind of art as well, requires less staff resources to do. Donated art, as long as the art is, quality is easy to maintain, and we have the funding allocated to maintain it over time. Community art, where an artist works directly with a local community group, school group, to paint or create art in a neighborhood. Temporary art, such as the Ghost Barn through outside organizations, it'll be up for a couple of weeks or a season perhaps. Integrated art, where we have an artist work directly with a design team for the construction of a new building, a new bridge, a new park. Art on publicly accessible private property. So this is Section 31 stuff from the Planning Act, where we can actually ask for public art on private property. An example of that is the Tim Horton statue, which is actually on Tim Horton's property on Ottawa Street, not on public property, so we do not have ownership or maintenance responsibilities for that work. And finally, memorials that address a very specific person, idea, or cultural movement. So our consultation plan, we hope to be meeting with you to talk about specific art projects or possible art projects that are planned, or you'd like to see in your ward, so we can take them out to public consultation over the next month. We'll also be meeting with internal and community focus groups to also help make sure we've identified those projects. We've met with the Cultural Roundtable, and we'll continue doing that, and we will meet with the Arts Advisory Commission. We're all going to, also going to be outreach to the public, probably starting in the middle of March, with a web-based mapping program called Community Walk, that we'll talk about in a minute, a questionnaire, and a series of five public meetings. And of course, all this information, just like we do with our public art calls, will be posted on the website at the end of the process. An example of the kind of questions we're going to be asking you and the public, what are your ideas for public art in your neighborhood or across the city? And the main tool we'll be using for that is this Community Walk site. You can see along the right side will be a list of all the public art projects current. We'll also have categories for monuments, planned projects, and the public will be able to go on here and actually select a point and suggest a product, a project, idea, scale, and provide comments on it, or provide comments on other people's projects, or the ideas. We'll be running those, very similar to what happened with the last Public Art Master Plan, through a selection of criteria, visibility of the artwork, is it in a BIA, is it in an area where it's going to get a lot of visibility, both by car and by walking, the public benefit of the work, the implementation potential, is there already money attached to it, is it in a, is it in association with another capital project that's moving forward soon? And the distribution of projects across the city, so we're not putting all our public art in one place. So we hope to be back to you after meeting with our internal and external committees to review the 10 selected sites, recommended sites, and any new public art projects or policies, the end of Q4 2015. You can see there, there's some examples of some of the current proposals that are going to be out for public consultation for public art in Dundas Driving Park and, and Castor Field Coat Walkway. But with that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate it. We have some questions to ask you. Councillor Jackson?
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Ken. So Ken, I've got a community group that has worked the last two years on a new park plan for the old Vincent Massey site on Seventh Avenue. Cynthia Graham and staff have submitted design requests for dollars and capital this year and next. It's so far past the threshold, it still has the budget to go, to be final approval. The citizens group have been working, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for about two years. They've approved a plan for Phase One, did not include public art. If down the road and in Phase Two, if more lands acquired, they'd be interested, and the park budget itself has been set. Is your fund and project dollars the type of thing that the request would go through and we could tap into? Mr. Deputy Mayor? Through you to Ken.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We include that as a planned project in the Public Art Master Plan to get it on the radar as a priority project, and then we would look for either funding it from our capital or some kind of partnership with the park capital moving forward.
So the key is the citizens group in consultation with staff in the next phase, were to say yes to it, and then through staff, my office, or in consultation with yourself, get it in the queue.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions? Being none, thanks very much, Ken. Really appreciate your, your report. And can I have a motion to receive the presentation? Councillor Vanderbeek and councillor Pearson, all those in favor? And may I have a motion to receive the report PED 15011? Councillor Green, councillor Persuda, all those in favor? Any against? Carry. Thank you. We move on now to discussion items. We've already done 8.1. 8.2, the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities Report. Is there any discussion respecting item 8.2? Councillor Pearson, move it. Councillor Connelly, all those in favor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, did you want to receive it or approve it? There are two recommendations within the report? Yes. Oh, that's okay if you choose to, but there are two recommendations, I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
8.2, we need to move it or secondor? Right? And councillor Connelly? All those in favor? Any against? Carry. 8.3, Hamilton Farmers Market Pilot Parking Project Extension. Is there any discussion respecting item 8.3? Councillor Persuda?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just quickly, reading it down here, there's a recommendation, it's roughly $60,000 for parking a year, it's not going to be taken out of the levy, so that's, we just get a bit of a background from Mr. Hertel, please. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, councillor, and through the chair. I guess for the newer members, perhaps a very brief overview, that we're undertaking a number of initiatives at the market. One overarching initiative is to convert it from, I'll say, a function of our department into a not-for-profit corporation under the municipal act. We also began, I would say, in roughly January of 2014, working on a very long list of operational items to try to improve the vendor situation and livelihood, as well as the market overall, ranging from signage to parking, to adding in Wi-Fi, cellphone, et cetera. And the list is still in progress. One of the activities involved in that overall view was the importance of having validated parking as an option, because in the, I'll say, in the pre-renovation era, when the street was a, a one-way street, it had parking on both sides. In the new renovated time, it's a two-way street, the parking has been eliminated from the street, and there's a parking arcade, which becomes the only nearby source for parking. So they, they had, they being the vendor community, had experienced... So they had, they being the vendor community, had experienced a pretty significant reduction in sales over the last few years, and one of the things they felt extremely important to put on the books was the opportunity for a one-hour validated parking. So on a pilot basis last year, with Council's approval, we undertook a pilot which has demonstrated that, in fact, it has been an important draw to the market for patrons. And particularly on the weekends, where we're seeing, on average, over four hundred validated parking hours each Saturday. So our recommendation is to move forward with this and embed it as a permanent part of the operating expense of the market. Last year, we were able to, through various efficiencies, handle about a $45,000 expense. The full year, we estimate, at our current rate, would cost us about $60,000. But we put it forward as a levy-neutral proposal, because at the same time, as part of our other activities, we've been looking at a variety of additional revenue sources. For example, literally this week and next, we will be installing thirteen flat screens throughout the market through a local company, Choice Media, and our portion of the in-year commission from that is $34,000 during the pilot. So it's a brand-new revenue stream. In addition to that, we have a number of investigations underway with regards to how we currently use the kitchen in the market, and turning it from a cost item to a revenue-generating item, which will have a net swing annually of about $80,000. And we hope to realize potentially at least $50,000 of that this year by the time we go through the process. We have a few other activities underway as well, where we're looking to add two additional vendor spaces on the York Street community space, small café kind of operations. We have some work to do technically to make that possible, but we think it's an important piece to add to the market. It creates a self-contained destination of its own, so that we can have that space available in non-market days and in non-market hours as well. We would anticipate that in-year, by the time we get the work done and get those spaces rented, we might realize another $4,000 in revenue. And we currently have three vacant stalls in the market, and we have three applicants for those spaces that are going through the process now. So we anticipate as well that that could generate another $19,000 in incremental revenue beyond what we have today. So all in all, we have a number of revenue sources that we're working on, some are confirmed and others are in negotiation, that we think will not only offset the $60,000 expense, but give us a few more dollars for the much-needed operational improvements and some additional marketing dollars.
Thank you, John. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And John, thank you for that update on that and for our new counselors, but it's very important that this is going this way. I know we needed the parking, keep the market going. We have spent a lot of money on the market renovating over the years, and it's been a contentious issue, continues to have some issues, but we're working through those two. Parking was one of them. It's good to see that you, through your hard work, John, and your staff, have found a way to work this through and include the parking with no increase in the levy. And I'd just like to say thank you for that and to all your staff that worked on this. At the appropriate time, I'd like to move it. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? You gonna move it?
I'll move the recommendations before us, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
And we have a second, Counselor Jackson. All those in favor?
Carry.
Any against? Carry. Thank you. 8.4, port fuels and material services, gasification for portlands. Is there any course and discussion respecting item 8.4? Counselor Collins.
On a related issue, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, I know that there's been discussions informally between the port and our staff regarding the process that the port takes to establish new businesses on their lands. And historically, the port, although they fall under federal jurisdiction, they've always submitted site plans, applied for demolition and building permits. And I'm wondering, knowing that, I mean, we can see what's on the horizon with the incinerator that's in front of us, I'm wondering if with new developments, specifically the brewery that's underway right now, whether they have applied for, made application for those three issues that I just referenced, site plan, demolition permits, and building permits. I ask that in the context of maybe what's to come with the gasification plan.
Do we have anybody that can answer that? Janice?
Through the Deputy Mayor, my understanding is that the brewery applied for demolition permits a month ago, although they have not, as far as I know, made application for site plan.
Okay. Can I ask that that be added as a future agenda item, either at GIC or Planning, wherever staff deem it appropriate? And I think it's something that needs to be addressed publicly, in light of the fact that those are public applications, and those applications have, are requirements for other businesses that are located in the city as well. And this is in the context of gasification. I'd be happy to move what's in front of us at the appropriate time as well.
Okay. Is there any other questions on this? And yes.
Just ask to legal, I mean, so the scope of a bump-up. My understanding is that the only difference in a bump-up would be the justification of that particular location versus other locations. Am I wrong on that, or is there other things that would be contained in a bump-up?
Sure. Through the Deputy Mayor, yes, there is more to a bump-up than that. And this, as this report says, we've retained WSP to conduct the technical background review of the PFMSI screening work. And we will be able to report back in April as to whether or not this would warrant a request for a bump-up. And the bump-up really involves sort of a two-step, and the first step is the terms of reference, and then the second step is the more rigorous review.
Okay. So a lot of information's already been provided for through the EA process. You're suggesting that in the bump-up, there would be a more rigorous review of the information that's already been obtained? Or is there a broader scope that takes place in a bump-up?
Through the Deputy Mayor, it could be both. It could be a broader scope, it could take a look at alternative alternatives, or it could be that, depending on the outcome of the review by WSP, there may be a determination that a more rigorous review is also required, or it may be that WSP reports back to the city that the information provided is sufficient.
So the question I have, the obvious question, would be, clearly, we haven't defined a position at this point relative to all the information that's been provided. Why not?
Through the Deputy Mayor, we are, we are working with our consultants, and they are doing the review. So we, at the point at which we retained them, which was mid-January, they began immediately working to obtain, you know, to put, you know, a series of questions and the technical review of the screening materials that is provided by PFMSI, in order to determine the level of review that's been done through that screening and whether it warrants further screening. So we're just in that process right now. That's what we're, that's what this report is basically saying, is we're in the middle of that process. We asked for a voluntary extension of the sixty-day timeline, because the materials were filed by PFMSI on December 22nd. We asked for a voluntary extension beyond the February 27 deadline. We're in discussions with them now. We asked for that initially back a couple of weeks ago, so we're in discussions with them now. But we definitely will need more time in order to have WSP be able to conclude their review and provide the materials back to the city. And that will provide the basis for Council to make an informed decision as to where, whether or not a bump-up request is warranted, and any guidance around that. In addition, in the report, we allude to the fact that Planning Staff have taken the view that this requires an OPA and a zoning bylaw amendment. There has been no application received to date, and that the WSP's review of the material will help to determine what the planning opinion will be on the proposed use.
So help me understand then the process, because I just want to make sure that we're applying the same process on all types of issues. It seems to me that we've embarked on a consultant. Was there a council resolution to do that?
Through the Deputy Mayor, there was, no, at the time, there was no council resolution, because we were required to basically react very quickly with the timeline. However, there was a confirmation of council support for that, which was put forward last week.
Last week? So we've had this consult on how long?
I believe that the retainer was actually approximately January 16th, thereabout, so we're looking at about two weeks.
Okay. Then that helps line up with the approval. I guess I'm trying to understand, and it's just a process, I'm supportive of what is being asked, but again, I want to make sure that there's not, keep the politics out of good decision-making, I want to understand how we arrived at the point that we arrived at, or was it politicized in any way? I want to be comfortable that it hasn't been politicized in any way, and that this is the normal process as we follow. Because this is the first time I've seen us take an aggressive approach in the absence of a council direction, to hire consultants and look at the review and look at, in the order and the context of asking for a bump-up. I haven't experienced it in eleven years I've been here, so that's why I'm trying to understand. What has changed on this particular application that we haven't experienced in the past?
So I guess two things. One, and I don't think it's been politicized at all, if I dare say. One is, there was a presentation last July to the Board of Health by this proponent, and there was a direction coming out of the Board of Health that Planning should report back, and at some point in time. And that was really, the trigger for that was obviously the proponent's notice of completion, which was not filed until December 22nd. So that was really the point at which the wheels began to turn. And at that point, Jason Thorne, the GM of Planning, and I had communication over the Christmas break, and said, we really need to take the steps, the due diligence, in order that Council does not lose its opportunity to have some kind of an informed review of this before we get to that timeline. So this, the step to retain WSP was done, just in an abundance of caution, so that we would have the review ongoing and not wait until the beginning of February to be trying to do that in a very short timeframe, because the last day is effectively February 27th.
So this was driven by Jason Thorne, then?
Well, this was in concert with Jason Thorne. We looked at what need we do, given that we have this break, in order to make sure that no opportunity for Council to have the fullest information before it to make an informed decision is lost.
I appreciate it. And thanks for the clarification. I just want to make sure that, Mr. Chair, because this is unusual. I've been here eleven years, I've never, ever, ever seen this. Now, we do have a new staff person with Jason Thorne, maybe that's the reason why this situation has changed, because there's a different approach with a different general manager. That might be the explanation, but certainly it's not one I've experienced in the whole time I've been here. That's why I thought I'd better ask the clarification. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Did you have a motion you want to put forward, or? Okay. All right.
The motion for the direction for staff to come back on the building permit, site plan, and demolition permit issues that are referenced.
So...
I would move that if the clerk deems it appropriate.
Okay. And you got a second, or Counselor Whitehead?
Counselor.
Or Counselor?
Yeah, he would like to second it.
Okay. Second, my Counselor Whitehead. All those in favor? And you get, Counselor Green?
Sorry, Mr. Deputy Chair, just for clarity, the report being presented is regarding port fuels. Are we directing staff to ask if they are also going to be providing with the permits? Just so, I want to make sure we're not mixing this up with the brewery.
Sure. It's a process issue, so I'd want to confirm that the port is still in the process, as they have in the past, and are still supportive of the city's planning process that requires site plan, application for building permits, and demolition permits, whether it's for the brewery, the gasification plant, or any other development.
Can I answer your question, Counselor? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy.
No problem. All those in favor? Any against? Thank you. 8.4A, correspondence from Robert M. Clark, CAO Ports Fuel Services, respecting the energy form from waste project in the port of Hamilton. Is a recommendation be received? Counselor Green? Counselor Jackson? All those in favor? Any against? 8.5, Tim Horton's Field Community Bookings, Ward 3. Is there any discussion respecting item 8.5? Counselor Green?
Mr. Deputy, just, no discussion. I don't think there has to be any kind of presentation in terms of the work that's been laid out over the last couple of weeks, but I wanted to make the comment that, following extensive conversations with staff, I had the opportunity to follow up with Glenn Gibson from the TyCats, as well as senior members of Public Work, and I'm very satisfied with the direction that has been taken, as laid out here in their report, and in fact, very excited for the opportunity to present this to the community at our earliest opportunity. So, you know, I think it's a great example of what happens when we are opening communication, and I'm just thankful for the staff through you, Mr. Deputy, to Corley and the folks there, you know, Rome, to be able to sit down and kind of walk me through this process. I'm very excited, I'm also thankful that I was able to have a great conversation with Glenn Gibson, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Conley?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with the report. I just want to make a comment, more than anything, on the Tim Horton's Field. I would think that the Football Hall of Fame would be better used and a better place to have it, if it's at Tim Horton's Field. I don't think it gets used here much, and I don't think that it's a very good place to take anybody. I had the opportunity to take my grandson, my son, there two weeks ago to the Hall of Fame, and I was very, 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 very disappointed. I don't think anything's happened in twenty years. I think it has to be revamped and replaced, and I hope that we can look at a place in the new field to do it. And I think you'd have a lot of people going there, especially kids, and they could not just look at things, but be active in the place. There's a lot of things you can put into a Hall of Fame that would interest kids. Right now, I don't think they're getting the interest. I know my five-year-old grandson, within three minutes said, "Let's go." There's nothing there. So I know it's got nothing to do with the community use, but I just wanted to bring it up as something that hopefully we can look at and maybe make better use of the Hall of Fame. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Conley. And just to let you know, there has been ongoing discussions with the CFL, with our city manager, with your, and the Board of Directors, with the Hamilton Football Hall of Fame, and we've making some great progress, but with ongoing talks, and we are moving, trying to move into a direction, I'm not sure if it's going to be Tim Horton's Field or not, but we're trying to find a solution, okay? So in the Tim Horton's Field, we have a motion to receive? Counselor Green?
Just, I don't know if there's a second speakers, but I did, I'm remiss now that my colleague, Counselor Farr, has returned, to thank him for his support on this and really, you know, helping me walk through the process. So I just thought that should also be noted, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I think Counselor Farr, he enjoys that stuff. Counselor Farr?
Yeah, just briefly, thanks to Corley Seacore and staff, and ultimately Jerry. And the reminder, in the short synopsis, as we lead to ratification of the good Counselor Ward 3's motion that the City of Hamilton maintains the master schedule of all booked events in accordance with the terms of the 20-year license agreement between Hamilton Tiger Cat Football and the City of Hamilton. And I think we needed this. There were some good questions during the debate. We did come at the motion that I seconded proudly just prior to the meeting, the night before. So all of those questions were very much appreciated, and I think staff have done a fine job in short order, delivering a reminder to us on just how the process works. And ultimately, the motion, if I can reiterate, from GIC, and this obviously culminating from that debate... from that debate, just speaks to equal opportunity for all, throughout the City of Hamilton, throughout this committee, throughout all the wards, as it relates to booking and what is available, and when we'll be able to take some tours and let folks know where the amenities in our stadium that are available to them. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green, one more time?
Last time, I do apologize, because this is something that came up as a little bit of confusion, and the process, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that was a learning process for me, confirmed the fact that we do maintain the master scheduling, we do maintain that through our staff, that we do indeed hold the pen. So, you know, just to make sure that we're clear, and we've had that conversation, I know there was some confusion around the table before, but all of that has been cleared up, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. So it's moved by yourself, and seconded by Counselor Farr, to receive the report. All those in favor? Any against? Carrie. Okay, we're going into motions. Counselor Conley, we'd like to introduce your motion. Oh. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Standardization of the Advanced Traffic Management System, they've been sitting here patiently all day, so I know this is very important to them. Sorry about that, Martin. Is there any discussion on 8.6? Counselor Jackson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Martin. Martin, just what's the essence, please, of this report? Because obviously, we got this this morning, and we've had a long debate on a couple of other matters. Just if you can give me a cursory essence of what your request is, please, here. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Martin White.
Sure.
Yeah, well, I'll actually field it for Martin. I'm Chris Jacobson, Superintendent of Traffic Operations. So the essence of the report is really that we're looking for approval today from Council to proceed with the purchase of a new central software system for our Advanced Traffic Management System that we're currently building throughout the city. So what that central system does is basically allow us to link all of our traffic signals together into one centralized location, allows us to make timing changes on the fly and be responsive to incidents which happen on the road, and really allows us to maximize the efficiency of the entire transportation system. So without this piece of software, we really can't do any of these tasks.
First of all, nice to finally meet you, Chris. We've exchanged emails, and you helped us out a year or two ago with the Kenilworth Access Closure there with the sliding rod for a couple of weeks, so nice to finally meet you. So is this all money been budgeted, and if so, is this part of the Red Light Camera revenue, or am I mistaken? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Martin, or Chris, please?
Through the chair. This money has been budgeted, been budgeted over a series of years through capital projects, through a couple of different accounts, none of which is Red Light Camera. It has been accounted for.
Okay, and again, single sourcing, I'm, in the past, I've usually been pretty good with a staff explanation, some, the odd time I've opposed it, Chris. So Chris, again, is this Kim Lee Horn and Associates, are they the only one in the business? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through the chair. Kim Lee Horn and Associates, the cadence system that we're looking to purchase here, it's not necessarily the only system out there that can do what we're looking for, but it is the one that's best suited to our current and future needs. Really, what makes them better than the other packages that exist is their ability to be compatible with our existing system. We do have plans for the future, however, we do have an existing system out there of 560 traffic signals, which all have a certain type of technology in them or controllers. So when we introduce a new system, it's important that that system can integrate and talk to the existing controllers, as well as provide us with the flexibility to move forward into the future.
So Chris, this is overall an $800,000 expenditure? Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
So again, Chris, this is where something where I would rely totally on staff, in this case, yourself, that, with the sole source, we're getting the best bang for our buck, where we won't be held hostage by a company that gets the privilege of a single source. You've given an explanation as to why you want them, and this is where I'll just have to totally rely on you to make sure checks and balances are in place for getting the best software, the best equipment, and moving forward on your standardization program. Is that a fair summary assessment? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Chris?
Through the chair, yeah, that's a fair assumption.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'll support at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Farr.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm very supportive of this, and I had an opportunity not long ago to meet at the Ward 6 location, where I believe, through you, to, Chris, we're going to make the installation in a room up at the Traffic Control Command Center, is that right, through you?
Through the chair, yes. We've constructed a TMC, or Traffic Management Center, up at our Traffic Operations Center, which exists at 1375 Upper Ottawa.
And through the chair, we're able with this technology to recognize, adapt, and react to changing road conditions in real time. So if we could just put that in perspective or paint a picture, this will be of great benefit to us. A technology, by the way, that you may confirm here today, that's been around in other communities, we may be a little bit behind on this, but that's been around, and it's effective in situations where maybe we have that pretty common tie-up at a place like the 403, or even along King Street during peak times, is that correct?
Through the chair, exactly. At this point in time, we have limited ability to truly react to situations which happen on our road system. So we need to have a tie-ups on the 403, the KiW, which drive traffic onto our local road systems, or even on the Linker, anywhere else for that matter. We have limited ability to truly do anything from a traffic control perspective to help. With the new central software system through the Traffic Management Center, we'll be able to adapt and react to those situations a lot faster.
Faster, more efficiently, and if I'm not mistaken, through you, and I'm trying to recollect back to the tour, and on that tour, were some transportation, I don't want to call them activists, but very engaged folks when it comes to roads, who you, John Mater, Ferguson, Martin, and others were nice enough to host for an evening, to have face-to-face dialogue on, you know, some of the work you do, and the fact that the work you do is citywide, and these kinds of efficiencies, actually, we're utilizing technology to a great advantage, where we literally could have one or two FTEs sitting in this room, a great big wall full of screens that take us to the site and make adjustments where we normally would go to the site off-site. Through you?
In a nutshell, yeah, you're correct. Essentially, what this will allow us to do is to identify problem areas remotely. The system itself will make adjustments based on certain thresholds that the central software has programmed into it. When we reach a critical mass, or when we think we need to take over the system, we have trained experts who can then modify exactly what we're doing remotely, rather than having to travel out to the site. Today, we just don't have that capability. If we have to make changes in the field, I think back to the truck which ran into the Skyway Bridge, we had to physically go out to controllers in the field to read time certain corridors, Cannon Street being one of them, and if you can imagine the amount of congestion that we run into, our own crews run into, trying to access these sites to make it better for everybody else, they're smack dab right in the middle of the congestion. So it's a long process for them, it's a frustrating process for them, and with this system, it allows us to do it remotely from 1375 Upper Ottawa.
Thanks, Chris, and appreciate all your dialogue with the community and myself, and all the good work, you and David Ferguson and others at the Command Center and throughout the city. I think, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there's a significant positive impact that we'll soon take notice of once the installation is put into place. Things like Pan Am Games will see transportation, all forms of transportation, run more smoothly because we are stepping into the 21st century and implementing such a valuable and progressive format to traffic management. So I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and one of my questions was answered, and thank you also, obviously, we just read this through, or just peeked through it. But I just wanted to ask, as you did mention right at the beginning, that the system will marry with the existing system we have, is that correct? You, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Through the chair, yes, it will. It will tie in, and it will be compatible with our existing system.
So will it, once we have it all in place, is it instantaneous, or is it over a period of time that this will all be, throughout the whole city? Will it recognize all of the signals throughout the city?
Again, through the chair, this is one phase of a kind of a multi-phase plan to upgrade the entire traffic signal system. So along with the central software system, we're also building an advanced on-street, high-speed wireless data communication system. Without that data communication system, we won't be able to bring back any information to the Traffic Management Center that the central software can see and process. So there is a phased approach to this. Phase 1 is starting this year, and we'll see us implement the wireless communication system to approximately 100 signals along King Street, Main Street, Cannon Street, Wilson Street, between, say, Gage and the 403 for the Pan Am Games. It's kind of been our focus for year 1, is to get the Pan Am corridors up and running. Our intent is to have 100 intersections online by July and on the system, so that we can adapt and react to any situations that may arise during the games.
Super. And as we phase the program through, as we implement different areas, do, will we be notifying either the ward counselors, or at least making a public notification media that they know what's happening out there? Because you know what's going to happen, we're going to start getting calls, well, how come our lights aren't, because we get them now? How come our lights aren't signaled, aren't timed, that we have, you know, proper pace of traffic? So that's going to happen, and they're going to say, "But it was supposed to be done." Is, how is that going to be addressed?
Through the chair, it, you know, from our perspective, would be no problem for us to report to Council annually, provide a list of our phasing, where do we plan to go this year, next year, and the following years. That's quite doable.
I would suggest that be part of the direction going forward with this report, that would be great. And one last, I just want to ask, how finite of change in lighting can this be? And the reason I ask is, coming in this morning, there was an awful lot of emergency vehicles that I passed en route. Is it to that point where we can change, say, when there's fire trucks dispatched and they're going down a certain road, that lights can be changed? I know they can change when they come out of their stations, but after that, they're at the control of the existing timing.
Through the chair, the system would be capable of doing a preempt system, is what you're referencing, is basically an emergency preempt system. At this point in time, we're really just functioning on just getting the corridors up and running and making them more efficient. We have had discussions with emergency services, fire services in the past, we will continue to have those discussions with those groups as well, along with transit, let's say, to do bus priority through the system. So the system itself is capable of doing those things, it's just a matter of getting all the players together and agreeing on paying for what, and do they really want it? Is it necessary?
Excellent, and I'm glad you touched on bus transit priority, so that's excellent. One last thing I'm going to ask, and this is a touchy one, is it tamper, is it hack-proof?
Through the chair, we have had many discussions with our IT specialists here at the city. So everything that we do is vetted through them. At the end of the day, they're the ones who are ultimately responsible for the on-street wireless network. They've assured us that they will have the proper security in place.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the clear and concise answers, and I certainly will support this.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson. Could you take the chair, Counselor Pearson? Just a question through you. Chris, I understand with the sole sourcing, the single source, that we're going to go, and we're going to go negotiate. So I'm just, just want to make sure about the price, you know, when you go to single sourcing, but obviously, the wording is here, you're going to go and negotiate with them. If negotiations fail and they fall down, does that mean you come back to Council?
I don't expect that to happen, but if it does happen, then yeah, ultimately, we would have to come back to Council with another recommendation.
Right. I mean, we're putting our trust in you, just, you know, the price is going up, just because we've already said that they're going to be the single source. I mean, that's no good. We want a fair, equitable deal, right?
Through the chair, yeah, we, when we discuss these matters with these companies, and just for clarification, this is not unusual for municipalities to go this route, given the highly unique nature of this type of software. Every piece of software is a little bit different, and every municipality has slightly different needs. So Kim Lee Horn has a great reputation within the industry. I can't talk about their pricing structure, but I believe in their professionalism, and they have been more than upfront with us throughout the entire process, that I have all confidence that we can successfully negotiate terms with them.
Great, thank you. Thank you, take the chair back, thanks for Counselor Pearson. So do I have a mover and seconder? Counselor Pearson? Moving. Counselor Jackson, seconding it. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any against?
No.
Thank you. There you go, Martin, I hope you're happy now. Motions. Negotiating with the Hamilton Conservation Authority respecting to a property exchange. Counselor Conley, would you like to introduce your motion?
Would you like me to read the motion out in its entirety, or?
We have it.
I'm sorry?
We all have it.
Okay. But I do have one question.
Sure.
Before I move it, okay? The question I have, and I don't know who can answer, because there's nobody, somebody from Planning here that I don't know? Anyways, it says that, as part of the recommendation, that the Hamilton Conservation Authority acquiring approximately 1.9 acres of city-owned land, and then on the next page, it says that in exchange for approximately 0.49 acres of city-owned land. So there's a discrepancy on the amount of land that we are negotiating with, and I want to know which one, which is 1.9 acres, correct, or 0.9, 0.49 acres?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's Ray Kessler from Real Estate. The amount on the first page, the approximately 1 acre, was the original recommendation of the Conservation Authority to its staff. The deal was supposed to be on an equitable basis, and so the transaction actually is, in essence, equitable pieces of property. The real recommendation here is 0.49 acres to the Conservation Authority in exchange for the Griffin House properties.
Okay, so the 1.9 acres is not accurate. On the second last line of the recommendation on the first page, it says, "Authority acquiring approximately 1.9 acres of city-owned land." Not 1 acre, 1 acre is up further, where they talk about 1 acre.
Yes, the 1.9 acres, on that first page, what's referenced in quotations is actually an excerpt from the Conservation Authority Board Minutes. So that was what was originally discussed, but what is before committee here this afternoon is actually the 0.49 acres.
Okay, I just want a clarification.
Just on that, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for Counselor Collins, or, sorry, Counselor Conley, the only part in this, that is the resolution itself, that would be approved, is everything after therefore be resolved? Everything else is just commentary, so you're not approving?
I understand that, I just didn't want the commentary to be wrong. Because we were talking about 1.49 acres originally, there was going to be four lots that we're going to exchange with, and then it was changed to one lot, which represents 0.49 acres. I just wanted to make sure that there's no mistake, so in the future, we don't have any problems, that's all. And I would move the motion, and it's going to be seconded by Counselor Pearson. If you want me to read it out, I will.
We have it in front of us.
Thank you.
Any questions on the motion?
Yes.
All those in favor, it's Carrie? Any against?
Carrie.
Okay, so notices of motion. Counselor Green?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to my Counselor colleagues, I have before me a notice of motion to waive the rules of order, to introduce a motion respecting the right to a healthy environment. This is a, this is a motion that I sent out quite some time ago, and I promised to my colleagues that as I get ahead of this thing, we'll have less of these waive the rules opportunities. So before you, I have a notice of motion to waive the rule, so I can introduce my motion.
I'll second the waiving of the rules.
Thank you. All those in favor?
It's urgency, sorry. It's emergency. What I do involve?
Okay, we have a seconder to waive the rules. Counsel? All those in favor?
Carrie.
Any against? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy, through you to Counsel. This motion is moved by myself, seconded... seconded by councillor Vanderbeek. I'm very happy to, been working with her and councillor Johnson on this file. And the notion of the motion reads as follows, it's the right to a healthy environment, whereas the municipality understands that people are a part of the environment, and that the healthy environment is inextricably linked to the well-being of our community, and whereas the municipality finds and declares that. All people have the right to live in a healthy environment, including the right to breathe clean air, the right to drink clean water, the right to consume safe food, the right to access nature, the right to know about pollutants and contaminants released into the local environment, and the right to participate in decision-making that will affect the environment. The municipality has the responsibility within its jurisdiction to respect, protect, and fulfill and promote these rights, and the municipality shall apply the precautionary principle. Where threats of serious or irreversible damage to the human health of the environment exist, a municipality will endeavor to, where possible, to take cost-effective measures to prevent the degradation of the environment and protect the health of its citizens. Lack of full scientific certainty shall not be viewed as sufficient reason for the municipality to postpone such measures. The municipality shall apply full cost accounting when evaluating reasonable foreseeable costs of proposed actions and alternatives. The municipality will always consider the costs of human health and the environment. The municipality shall specify objectives, targets, timelines, and actions the municipality will take within its jurisdiction to fulfill residents' rights to a healthy environment, including priority actions to ensure equitable distribution of environmental benefits and burdens within the municipality, preventing the development of pollution hotspots, to ensure infrastructure and development projects to protect the environment, including air quality, to address climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and implementing adaptive measures, responsibly increase density, prioritize walking, cycling, public transit as preferred modes of transportation, ensure adequate infrastructure for the provision of safe and accessible drinking water, promote availability of safe foods, reduce solid waste, promote recycling and composting, establish and maintain accessible green spaces in residential neighborhoods, and in taking these aforementioned steps, continue to protect and restore biodiversity and ecosystem services of the many unique and varied natural features as defined by our municipality, from the Niagara Scartman and surrounding green belts to Lake Ontario, with Coots Paradise and Dundas Valley at its heart. That the mayor, on behalf of city council, be directed to correspond with the right Honorable Stephen Harper and the Honorable Kathleen Wynne, Premier of Ontario, calling for the development of a federal and provincial legislation that recognizes that all people have the right to live in a healthy environment. That the city manager be directed to review the objectives, targets, timelines, and actions every five years, and evaluate progress towards fulfilling this declaration, and report back to the General Issues Committee. That staff be directed to consult with residents as a part of the right to a healthy environment process, and that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities on the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Oh, sorry, and the association. So that is the motion that is before you. I know it seems fairly comprehensive. My comments, do I do the comments at this point? Okay. My comments to this motion are as follows. That having had the opportunity to work closely with staff, and in particular, the mayor's office, our legal department, our city manager's office, having had the opportunity to converse with many of my colleagues, and in keeping with the original timeframes and objectives as laid out by Vision 2020, as far back as 1997, this particular motion comes before you today in conjunction with a movement that is set forward by the David Suzuki Foundation called the Blue Dot Movement. This movement was initiated by residents of our city in hopes that we would be able to be the first municipality in the province of Ontario to sign on to this declaration. This declaration is just that, it's a declaration to a healthy environment. It is in keeping with our principles, and will allow us to really take a leadership position in maintaining our policies around sustainability. I have all the reports for 2020, and as they relate to Hamilton. My hope is that staff, at a time that is more appropriate, revisit some of the guidelines and timelines that we put forth in the 2020 vision, so that we can make sure that we maintain our leadership position with this particular motion. I hope that the motion has satisfied all of the questions and concerns that may be around council, and my hope is that we can take a standing recorded vote when appropriate.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor who'd like to? Oh, sorry, councillor Jackson, I'm sorry. You're first. Sorry, Terry.
Everybody wants to hear councillor Whitehead first, all?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So we just got this today. It's taken from a notice, and I, so first of all, the enthusiasm of our new colleague from War Three, councillor Green, needs to be applauded. Obviously, he's done a heck of a lot of homework on this. He mentioned people he's met with and consulted with. So I just had this dropped on me today. It was a notice. This, all these three pages, Mr. Deputy Mayor, sound so motherhood. But I don't know what the ramifications are of it. For example, and I don't, I'm not trying to be pedantic about it in terms of trying to just put up unnecessary struggles here. But on page one, under paragraph one F, the right to participate in decision-making, they'll affect the environment. So that's a wonderful motherhood broad statement, but I don't know what that means. Does that mean that decision-making, that who will decide what will affect the environment, and how this body ultimately, that represents the over half a million people in this city, will that handcuff this body in terms of the right to participate in decision-making? Page two, paragraph five, subsection B, ensure infrastructure and development projects protect the environment. So I guess is that leading in a certain direction to the type of projects that a certain segment, element of our community, of staff would want over something else? Section D of paragraph five, responsible increase density. So does that mean stopping any more growth in any other parts of the city, no matter how warranted, or how much it would still be providing choice to people who want to live in Hamilton? Section E of paragraph five, prioritize walking, cycling, public transit as preferred modes of transportation. So if this gets approved, do all of senior management team go hypothetically, councillor Jackson, several of your road reconstruction projects now, in light of this blue dot policy that you've approved from David Suzuki via councillor Green's office, you'll have to put those aside, councillor, because now we have a mandate to prioritize these other preferred modes of transportation. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if this is, if the desire is on the mover of the motion, and it is his motion, which I respect, if it's to go ahead today, and I know it sounds also motherhood, but I have no idea what some of the consequences or ramifications are, I'll just quietly be opposed. I don't want to hold it up if the bulk of my colleagues say, Tom, this is good stuff for our city, and so much of it sounds good. I just don't know what all the outcomes will be of several of these sentences, paragraphs, et cetera. You know, I'm learning more about a guy like David Suzuki, and I kind of know for several decades where his philosophy is. And so a number of us, like me, have sat at this body in the last term of council, and trying to learn and get caught up to how things we do affect our environment. So I get all that. I just don't know if this type of thing becomes policy ingrained in senior management team moving forward, and so there'll be consequences to that ingrained policy, that from now on, this will be used as the foundation of moving forward. I mean, this stuff here really would make a great workshop day as part of a council visioning exercise that we would put up, maybe time, maybe time too, after since the amalgamated city, and I think it was about eight, nine years ago, that in fact, I think under Mayor Eisenberger's first term, that we went through a visioning exercise, best place to raise a child came out of it. Anyways, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I've spoken enough. If this body, which I respect, wants to move forward on it, so I'll just ask to quietly be opposed, not because I'm opposed, please, I know, I know how this will be portrayed amongst some. Not that I'm opposed to wanting a healthier, cleaner, happier city and environment for all our residents and citizens, especially the constituents I have the honor to represent, but I just don't know what it all means at the end of the day, and what it might affect consequently. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you. Again, I concur with councillor Jackson that there's a lot of motherhood statements here. This position for Suzuki has been out there for a long, long time. FCM has not adopted it for a reason. I'd like to know what that reason is, and I don't have that before me. I know that this has been out there for a long, long time. I know that we approved 2020, and we looked at a three-legged stool, understanding there's a balance between environment, economic development, and social. I don't see a balance in this presentation that's consistent with the values that we presented through that strategy. So I don't know, for example, if this could drive cost up significantly, where we already have a community that is in, you know, affordable or financial straits, that this kind of motion is a back way of coming around and creating a greater and higher level of cost on the backs of taxpayers because we endorsed this particular resolution. And the problem is, is the city manager, who apparently was part of this, is not here. So I want to ask Gerry the very questions, who's the acting, he doesn't have the answers. So I'm not exactly sure what the implications are on future decision-making, and in absence of the people that apparently were involved in developing this, it concerns me. It may be fine, but the right people aren't here to answer those questions. So for the same reason with councillor Jackson, I just wanted to have more clarification on whether this is going to cost more in regards to everything we do. Is there a balance in the approach, in this precautionary principle? Can somebody explain to me? Because if this is, and one of the reasons why I like to support it, is because the Florida issue's been one that I've been on for a long time. And you apply the precautionary principle, you apply this, this particular motion, then the Florida's gone. Florida's gone. So I need to understand what the implications are of this, of this resolution. And if it's clear that it doesn't forego a balanced approach in decision-making, I'm fine. But the city manager's not here to answer that question. So at this point, I'm going to have to ask if we can hold off till council, or till we get the city manager to respond to those questions.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Green. Councillor Murillo, sorry, use the second.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I respect what everyone is saying, and I think the waiving of the motion is, was brought forward today because I think there's no real hurry in having this approved, except wanting to be the first, or wanting to be a leader on this particular issue, firstly. Secondly, I think you can look at this as a guiding principle, more than something that is being written in stone, that will make us obligated to make decisions in a certain way. It's no different than our vision, to be the best place in Canada, to raise a child, promote innovation, engage citizens, and provide diverse economic opportunities. Every decision we make, I think someone could argue that we're either in line with that particular vision, or out of tune with that particular vision. I'm not sure how, as an example, gasification would fall within, within any of that vision, except the economic opportunity. But then you look at the best place to raise a child, and who wants to raise a child in an emission-ridden area, right? So it goes on and on and on. And so in essence, it's not as if we are fixed in some sort of concrete in allowing us not to, in any way, vacillate on our, on a particular item or issue, what have you, depending on what the recommendation is, or what council's will is. The bottom line is this. This was emailed to everybody two weeks ago by councillor Green. So in essence, we've had it in our possession for two weeks. And that was, that was universally sent out to council. And if I could just confirm that through you to deputy mayor, Madam Clerk, was that distributed to council?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It was distributed. I could find out when, if you just give me one moment to check.
Okay, so. Okay. I remember receiving it, and there'll, a distribution list of council. So it was, it was sent out, I know, because I received it. So I can't control how other people read your emails. But having said that, it was sent. So in all fairness. But more importantly, we have, we have an opportunity today to approve it, and we have from now till council to ratify it. So if people do have concerns, you can support it on condition that if you find that the sky is falling from this day to council, when we have to ratify it, then don't, don't support it then. But just to be a good colleague, I'm allowing this to move forward. It's not in any way being ratified today. So it is councillor Green's second motion. I think we all were there at one day, or one time or another. And I can recall, I can recall a number of my motions going down in flame, but not because the motions were bad, but because perhaps I was too enthusiastic. And he should almost understood, that's right. So in no, in no way should councillor Green be, I guess, punished for his overly enthusiastic approach. And I think calmer head should prevail, and we have, we have a buffer period to council to allow this to be studied further. So I would hope, being that we all were there at one time or another, allow this to move forward, just to allow yourselves to do the necessary research, to go back in your email, pull out the, pull out the ones you haven't read, and analyze it, so we're all on the same page. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It was sent to all members of council, DL council, Mr. Cutler, and Drina O'Malley, Friday, January 30th, at 9:59 a.m., by myself, on behalf of councillor Green.
Also, it actually came from Clerk's office to everyone. So again, you've had, you've had it for two weeks.
January 30th.
30th?
Just Friday.
Oh, and.
Maybe you have, maybe you have an answer.
30th of January?
Yes.
Okay, so you've had it for a few days anyway. You've had it, I've had it sooner than because I had a resident of mine send it to me, based on the same issue. So I've had it for a few weeks.
Councillor Pearson.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I appreciate the previous speakers, and, you know, I commend councillor Green for bringing this forward, but I would like to get more clarification of what exactly this means. I mean, you read this, and right now, I'm going to go right on as Chair of Solid Waste Management, reduce solid waste and promote recycling and composting. We do that already. So I'm going through here, going, what are the implications of this in context with the whole motion, and what we already have in place? I mean, establish and maintain accessible green spaces in all residential neighborhoods. I was under the thoughts that are official plans, and our secondary plans, and our, and our growth plans, and all of that cover this off. So are we just reinforcing? I would like to know that that's what this means, as opposed to giving new direction going forward, and saying, well, we're going to change how this is reviewed, or we're going to have it done. We're going to have another process, or never, another step of how things are being processed through the city. So I have some major issues in supporting this at this time. I appreciate where councillor Murillo's coming from, but I did open it on Friday myself. I did read it. It was very lengthy on the BlackBerry in North Bay. But I did read it through and thought, well, there would be more information, or at least staff here, that could give us some indication of what this actually means. And seeing that that's not here, I do have a problem supporting it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vanderby?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just have a couple of things to say. First of all, I would like to know that it is also corroborating things that we're already doing. I agree with that, and I very much appreciate the points that other people have brought up. But I'm wondering whether it might be, there might be a comfort level in changing some of the wording a little bit, with, of course, the agreement of the mover and the seconder, myself. And things like, instead of ensure, perhaps it could be encourage, if we find that we're reiterating things. If people are not willing to pass this motion as it is now, I would like to know what the, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Stephanie, I'd like to know. direction from staff.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if it is the committee's.
Excuse me. Excuse me, there was a question asked, nobody can hear.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if it is the committee's wish, the matter may be tabled to the February 18th meeting, and then we can ensure that all staff that need to speak to this could be in attendance?
Thank you.
Or can just be tabled to a future date?
Can, can, can I move that it be tabled, or do we have to, does the motion have to be lost first, or I'm just not sure?
No, the motion is on the table right now, so if you choose, you put it forward if you choose to table.
I would hate to lose the value of this motion by not tabling it. I mean, if we're going to have a standing vote on it today, then, you know, it may pass and it may not. So if people, if there's a comfort level for people in hearing from staff and, and just having a little more information, then I would hate for it to be lost. So if it's appropriate, I'm willing to move that we table the motion until the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vanderby. Councillor Farr.
Yeah, this is good stuff, and it's familiar stuff, especially for anybody who's been around a while. And I would just ask through you, we do have one senior manager in Janet Atwood-Kowski with us, so I know among other senior staff, she's been part of working, in some part anyway, on what's before us. And again, what's before us, I don't think should be anything of any great concern unless, of course, we defeat this here today, because I'm sure we'll hear about it from many circles if we do. So through you too, Janet, you've seen this, could you comment on what's before us and what, what if any concerns we may have?
So through the deputy mayor. The, there was language in this that.
Excuse me, Janice, I'm so sorry. I think before you're asking questions, we need to clarify whether or not the tabling motion, which is not debatable unless it's on instruction, has been addressed. So we need to understand first, I guess, if councillor Green is in agreement with tabling it. If not, then councillor Vanderby has the option to withdraw or second her.
Okay, so I didn't hear councillor Vanderby wanting to table as a motion or a seconder. Is that what you're asking now? Because I just heard you seconded.
I don't know. I don't know if I can. That was my question really. Can I, can I move that? I would like to do it with, with.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What I had, was trying to explain is that because councillor Green, councillor Green, because councillor Green moved the motion and it was seconded by councillor Vanderby, if councillor Green is in agreement with tabling it today, she can certainly table it. If not, then councillor Green would require another seconder.
I think I know where you're going, where you're, what you're recommending with this. So councillor Vanderby, are you asking?
I am asking if he's, if he's.
Councillor Green.
Got an interest in that.
Are you in agreement with that?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, there's way more confusion than I anticipated. I had lots of conversations with folks, clearly didn't do enough work on this file. I'll happily remove my, I will say this though, this has gone through all senior management. We wordsmithed this, it went through legal, it's in keeping with all of our existing principles. It is, it is, you know, to borrow your term, mothers.
Motherhood.
It is motherhood. We had an opportunity to be bold and to lead, and I apologize for rushing this. I'm happy to table it. We can go slow, we can be second, that's okay. So I'm going to table it for now, and, and when, when, when there's will of council and, and we have all these questions prevail, then I'm happy to reintroduce it at a more appropriate time.
Can I say something?
Councillor Vanderby, so if we're, there's no, there's not going to be no debate if it's going to be a table?
I was just going to ask a question. Can I ask a question? So, so am I understanding that you're looking at, that councillor Green is looking at tabling it altogether with no callback date? Or, I mean, I was talking about a callback date in a couple of weeks.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that would be February the 18th. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm fine with that, if they, if they want to bring it to another date with the Clerk's office, if they want to make it February 18th, but this is really getting confusing. Councillor Farr had the floor, and then we're, we're getting some recommendations, and now we're doing this? Now councillor Whitehead wants to get into it? You know? Yes.
Councillor Vanderby didn't want to table the motion, which is why I ask for clarification. Yes.
Okay, can we get this organized here? Councillor Farr, did you want to continue, or do you want them to?
Just with the tabling motion on the floor and to the tabling motion, since I did have the floor anyway, to the clerk through you, it stays then as a notice of motion, I would assume.
The way, the, okay, the rules of order were waived to allow it to be introduced as a motion. So it will now remain a motion.
That's right.
It can be tabled to February 18th or, or tabled without a date until such time as committee or councillor Green wishes to lift it.
So next available date is February the 18th, and I'm hearing my colleagues suggest to the tabling motion, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that it will be a motion and not a notice of motion at that time. I'll speak to it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead, just wait, wait your turn, councillor Whitehead. Councillor Vanderby, go ahead. I got everybody going this direction as all they want to rule this.
So we're tabling it until February the 18th.
Okay, do you have a seconder?
I don't. So someone needs to second it if that's going to happen.
Councillor Green, you second it? To table it? Okay, and there's no debate on this? Madam Clerk?
Just a question.
Okay. All those in favor? All those, she just, she just answered you, councillor.
Through clarification, I think what councillor Whitehead might have missed in the conversation was that they were, councillor Vanderby was tabling it until such time as the city manager and other staff involved could be available to attend the meeting to speak to the matter. So if there is discussion on that specific direction, yes, you can receive clarification, not debate, but clarification on the direction.
Okay.
Whatever you wish.
Then I'm going to rule on it. All those in favor?
Harry.
You want to challenge the chair? Go ahead. I'm tired of it all the time, Terry. You're not listening?
I challenge the chair on the direction.
Councillor?
On the direction, because of Borneo's rules that brings, clear Mr. Chair, and on the tabling motion, if you can debate the direction. I believe that we can salvage the timing that councillor Green has put forward so that we don't lose the, I guess, the spot, like just getting simple answers to those questions before the council meeting. That's all.
Councillor Whitehead. We have there.
That's fine. Yeah, you want to prove it.
It's to table it. All those in favor?
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Marilla, would you like to introduce your motion, notice of motion?
I don't know now. No, it's not. It's a move by myself that to assist in conditioning and branding of HSR and alleviating the stigma attached to public transit use in Hamilton, staff be directed to review the feasibility of a 10 cent increase to HSR fares and the implementation of a policy that would provide free transit for children under 12 of age and report back to Public Works Committee.
So as a notice of motion, councillor? Okay? Madam Clerk?
I'm really surprised, I'm going to say this out loud, but God help me, councillor Whitehead is correct. It is, he is able to debate the tabling motion and the direction.
He can debate it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, he's gone to get Borneo's rules of order.
Okay.
I was, I was under the belief that you could discuss it, but not debate it. My apologies.
Not a problem. You were giving us, and I'll explain it to councillor Whitehead. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman, on my notice, I'm not going, I'm not debating the notice, but can I ask staff a question on my notice? It's related to Friday's public transportation report, and I think it'd be more relevant. So if I could refer this to Friday's GIC, because it's more relevant than it is GIC.
So. Gerry?
So through the chair, councillor Marula was right, on Friday, we have the Public Works budget presentation, of which part of that is coming back with councillor's direction on a 10-year transit strategy, conventional transit strategy. Of that, we're discussing fares, so I think it would be appropriate to have it as part of that overall discussion, if that's the worship council.
Thank you. So I'll move that second by councillor Johnson.
Okay.
It's referred to Friday's budget deliberation regarding public.
As a notice of motion?
Yes, as a notice, yeah.
Okay.
Or as a motion, as a motion, sorry.
As a motion?
Yeah. Now that I have to write it.
Now councillor Kirk, or Madam Clerk?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor? Any against? Thank you. Councillor, councillor Whitehead, before you go in there, councillor Whitehead. I know you're out there looking. We got, we got advice? Okay, I understand it's your rules.
No, it's not my rules.
I understand there was a correction that was made, but you're out there, so we couldn't talk to you. Just want to let you know that. 10.3. Councillor Collins, would you like to introduce your notice of motion?
Yes, I would. And I think it's before everyone, and I would move to waive the rules. I had originally anticipated moving this at Public Works, but with the cancellation of the meeting, I had to move it to GIC.
Do you have a seconder, councillor Marilla? All those in favor to waive the rules? Bring this motion in?
Second, 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 second.
Okay.
All those, all those in favor?
Carried.
Thank you.
And the motion is itself is straightforward. It's a reconstruction of Cromwell, and the funds have been identified here, they are budgeted.
You haven't afforded, you have a seconder, councillor Marilla? All those in favor?
Here.
Any against? Okay, thank you. On the closed session minutes, is, do we have everybody here, or is there a reason that we have to go in the closed session, or we can just pass these minutes? Or is, what is the direction of this, this committee?
Do you want it on camera?
To go on camera? You go in the direction, you can't go on camera?
Or at least. Oh, we still have. We got a question on it from Frank, right?
Oh, yeah.
I can speak to that.
Councillor?
I was going to say, we still need to address item 11.2. 12.1, if it's the committee's wish, can be moved in open session, but the other items we do need to move in.
12.1 can be done now.
If it's committee's.
And we can go into camera for the other issues.
Yes, but we still need to address item 11.2 first.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear you.
Item 11.2, you have to address first, the correspondence from the firefighters.
Yes, I'm going to do it. Yep. So, on 11.2, correspondence from the Hamilton Firefighters Association, Local 288, and International Association of Firefighters respecting a proposed committee of two councillors and two firefighters and a proposed fallen firefighter memorial. Recommendation for the consideration of committee. So, okay, whoa. So she just want to talk, or you want to, who's the movie? Okay. Thanks, councillor.
I'll certainly support that. I did want to recognize, in the correspondence, this is a file that councillor Marley was working on for a number of years with Local 288, and of course, with his passing, the project was stalled. And so Mr. Summers from Local 288 is asking, it's self-evident in the, in the correspondence, they're hoping that council can move again on this project and give it some priority. So I certainly volunteer my name, as has councillor Marula, and support councillor Farr's motion.
So we're. Do you have a seconder? Councillor Farr, councillor Marilla, who wants to be the second? Councillor Whitehead? You guys want to flip? Councillor Farr?
I would, I would move, or as a notice of motion and then a motion, or can we just move it?
Would you move it?
I can move that, right. Notice, or a motion to move to appoint councillor Sam Marula of Ward Four and councillor Jack Collins of Ward Five to be part of this firefighters' memorial committee.
Headed by councillor Whitehead.
Okay. All those in favor?
Here.
Thank you. Now, do we go into being in camera session, Madam Clerk? So on 12.1, may I please have a motion to approve the closed session minutes of January 14th, 2015, as presented? Councillor Pearson, councillor Connolly, all those in favor?
Here.
Thank you. Any against? Okay, so may I please have a motion to move in the closed session pursuant to section 8.1, subsection C, D, E, and F of the city's procedural bylaw 14300 and section 239, subsection C, D, E, and F of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001, as amended as a subject matters pertain to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for city purposes, labor relations or employee negotiations, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrators' tribunals, affecting the municipality, receiving advice that is not, that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Marula, councillor Whitehead, second it? All those in favor going to the closed sessions?